All right, I call this, uh, call to order this Thursday, August 6th, meeting for, um, the reopening presentation and I'll open with a roll call vote. Um, Jess Riley?
Here.
Tim Knight?
Here.
Leo Brem?
Here.
Megan Glenn from her home?
Here.
And Anna May O'Shea Brook here. All right, we're gonna go right into the presentation and thank you everybody for joining us.
I'm just gonna share the screen. The screen up?
No. Please note how, um, this evening's gonna work, so Dr. Marsden is going to, um, present the, the various plans and we will take questions from, um, from the attendees and then at the end, school committee will make a vote.
And, um, Anna May, so all questions are through the?
Yes, through the, yes, through the Q and A, thank you.
And we can continue, we can be ad hoc.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Oh, that's an official record, over 300.
I know.
Glad to see it.
All right. Load up here. So I, I, thank you, Madam Chair, um, I'll be presenting the, the three different models tonight, but before we start, I just want to, um, thank, acknowledge the work, um, that has been done in the past few weeks. Uh, so early in July, we started with our, our building base and our district teams and, um, you know, a lot of work went into that, we had over 10 meetings, we had 10 meetings, a lot of input and, um, really felt proud about the work that they were doing and the input that they gave us. Also, um, just wanna recognize the leadership team. So, uh, the leadership team over the past few weeks has essentially put their lives on hold, canceled vacations and, you know, really wanted to make, uh, the best effort for this plan for the kids of Medfield and I just wanna thank them for that before we get into the, the, uh, the slides. So a few things that I wanna talk about in the beginning in terms of disclaimers, so we've gotta be clear about these particular things. At the end of this meeting, there's gonna be some people be very happy and others will be disappointed. There's absolutely no option that will satisfy all students, parents, teachers, staff. This is what we call in education, an educational dilemma where there is really no answer and no great, uh, answer to it. It's really a management issue and trying to manage that dilemma. So I just want upfront, know that there are gonna be people that aren't very happy with what, what comes out of this meeting. And this is our plan as of today and we've, if we've learned one thing that in the last five months that things changed very quickly, uh, so I think that we need to be prepared to pivot however it goes and, uh, we need to adjust at any time. One thing that's really critical to all of this that everyone needs to understand is that, uh, many, uh, many of these aspects of this plan, um, have to be collectively bargained, uh, with the Medfield Teachers Association. So, uh, chapter, um, Mass General Law, Chapter 150E, uh, requires bargaining and impact bargaining when there's a change in working conditions. So any of this that we're talking about in terms of, uh, remote, hybrid or in-person, all constitute changes in working conditions. So I think we gotta keep that in mind as we go through this. And then we need to, you know, work out the day-to-day details, the weeds, so to speak, um, as we go through, you know, looking at, um, some of the operational items in each building, we're still working on those particular items. So as we started this process, uh, we had got seven guiding principles that, uh, we went through and we reviewed before every meeting to make sure that we were adhering to those guiding principles. One is that the safety of students and staff was our number one priority. Every student would have daily impactful learning experiences whether in-person or remote and I think we learned a lot from the spring. I think that, you know, our teachers did a wonderful job, um, in 72 hours essentially pivoting from brick and mortar school into a, a remote setting and no one expected that a very few people in the state were equipped to do that and I think we did it in a really, really good way. However, we learned a lot of things that we can do better and I think, you know, part of that, uh, came out in this process. Education will take a whole child approach, you know, different, valuing the different developmental, emotional and academic needs. It's going to look different at Memorial than it's going to look at the high school and we know that, um, so we account for that in our plan. Teaching and learning will continue in all formats to exceed DESI guidelines, frameworks and expectations. I think that's something we've always prided ourselves here in Medfield is to really go beyond what DESI or any, or any other organization recommends and we will continue to do that in this process. Students receive consistent experiences within the grade across the school and throughout the district. I would say the, the biggest positive that came out of, uh, the three months that we were remote at the end of the school year was the increased collaboration among teachers and, and how they worked incredibly well together, um, shared the workload and got, got things done for kids. So I think we're gonna try to build on that and make sure there's consistent experiences across the board. Curriculum will support learning in a broad range of disciplines and provide diverse perspectives. I think that's something we've been working on for the last year and a half, two years and we'll continue to do that even in whatever model we choose. And then our decisions will be based on the evolving state directives using real data and we just really have to adapt to that. So we're not sure, uh, what the next day will bring, we're not sure in terms of, uh, the virus, what, what's going to go, what direction is going to go. So we have to plan for all three, uh, knowing that probably at some point we'll be in, in all three of these, uh, different models during the school year. So we went through the process, uh, we established the building base teams. So in those building base teams, um, we had, they were led by the principal and then we had teacher representatives, the school nurse, custodian, secretary, teaching assistant. So that was really a, a building base group that wanted to look at, at what the reopening would look like through the lens of their building. So that group, uh, we had five of those and, and essentially what we did, uh, right when we started is we put all three elementaries together into one, one building base group, which worked out really well. We had the district advisory committee. The district advisory committee, um, was a group of folks that, uh, if you, when you look at the, um, the, the entire plan, uh, we listed all those, uh, participants in that and that was a group that, uh, after the, the building base teams met on Wednesday and Thursday, on Tuesday we'd get back together and the, each building base team would present what they accomplished in Wednesday and Thursday and then get feedback from the district advisory, which was a really good model. You know, we, we established those norms ahead of time of how we're gonna act as a group and, uh, it was very, very positive and, and people, it wasn't group think, people were, you know, pushing each other and that was really important. So, um, that was a great, great model that we adopted in the month of July. Our meeting dates are there, again, we focused on in-person, remote and hybrid. We've had several leadership meetings starting, um, in June in this very room, the high school library and, um, you know, go, we still have them weekly, uh, we, we try to, um, get as many in-person meetings as we can, socially distanced, of course. And then we've had conversations with union leadership, so that's, that's an ongoing conversation. Uh, we had a positive meeting this morning, uh, for a couple hours and we have meetings set up, uh, in the next coming week. So, a lot went into that process in getting to where we are with this plan, um, but there was a lot of background that happened as well. So, as you know, we did parent and teacher, uh, and staff surveys. So we did one in the month of July, one in the month of August. So let's, I, I've been referring to these as the tale of, of two surveys, so their, the results are very different. So let's take a look at the parent survey number one, which took place on July 7th. That was the last day of it. Given the most recent guidance, do you plan on sending your children back to school with an in-person model? So we had over 1,800 responses to that. 77.3, yes. 19.1%, uh, not sure and a very small sliver in there in no. So that was in July, um, the guidance had just come out, we released the guidance, sent that out and we didn't know a lot about what school might look like at that point. So if we look at the August 4th survey, what is your preferred option for your child or children? Please see the descriptions, we've gave a description of what in-person, hybrid and remote might look like. So you'll see the numbers changed, uh, 51.4, we're looking at in-person, still the most, uh, popular, uh, choice for parents. 39 points, excuse me, 36.9 and the hybrid and the remote was 11.7. So you start to see a, a shift in what parents were thinking, um, you know, as, as we get closer to the school year, as more guidance gets released, as more understanding of what the school year might look like, whether it's in-person, hybrid or remote, you get a better understanding of what it is by August 4th. We look at the teachers, uh, we had that on July 1st, um, given the DESI guidance on school opening, do you plan to return to work if we implement the in-person model for the 2021 school year? And you'll see 90, almost 92% of, uh, teachers and staff replied yes to that. There was one person, a, a real sliver of point, a 0.3 of no and 8% were unsure at that point. So, you know, take a look at that as July and where we were first getting into, uh, doing the planning, we hadn't really gotten all of the guidance yet from the state, we didn't know what transportation was gonna look like, we didn't know the stop and start protocols, we didn't have any of that information, uh, that we have now. So we issued a second survey in August, um, under the conditions outlined in above and again, talking about, you know, what the guidance was in the survey, um, looking at the different models, uh, which would you most prefer to enact in September? So getting a sense of where people are, the response rate was almost identical, we had 334 on this one and you'll start to see a shift here as well. So hybrid was 45.5, uh, remote was 38% and in-person, uh, went from 92% to 16.5%. So there's really a, a tale of two surveys there where, you know, we started to plan and think for one thing, um, in, in July and then got a second data point in August and we started to see a real shift in both what parents and what staff and teachers were thinking. So I wanna highlight and, and really it's, the, the plan is 70 pages and, um, it has a lot of links to it, a lot of links to, um, what the state has provided, the guidance and, and, uh, many other documents. So I'm trying to distill 70 pages into about 35 slides or so. So, um, I'm gonna look at stuff at a, at a fairly high level, um, get into some detail in some areas, but the plan that will be posted right after this meeting online has all this information in it. So I just want everyone to understand that, that if we don't touch upon a certain area here, it's probably in the plan. And school committee and the Board of Health are the only people that have that plan right now, um, but as I said, once, uh, school committee has a vote, uh, to do whatever they do, once it's official, uh, then that will be posted online. So, uh, later on this evening, people can read to their hearts desire. So let's look at building and facilities first. So a lot of the questions and concerns that we got from both parents and staff, uh, during the, both surveys was looking at the cleaning protocol. So I think that's on the forefront of everyone's mind is, is that if my child or if I'm an employee going back to work, what do the cleaning protocols look like and how are we gonna be kept safe? So in the plan, there is an actual schedule of what the cleaning happens, what the clean's gonna happen in every building every day, both during the day, at night, um, and, and then, um, at other, other periods of time if we do a deep cleaning. So all that is in our plan, but let's just talk a little bit, some of the high, the high, um, high information. So classrooms will be cleaned, disinfected daily at the end of each day, desks will be wiped down and the entire room will be disinfected with a solution. In, in what we have is a, uh, a solution that kills the virus in four minutes. So we've been testing it, we tested it out at, at central office, um, almost every day. Michael has his Ghostbuster outfit on and he sprays the entire office and it works really, really well. So it able, it enables us to disinfect a classroom in short order. So we'll be able to do that every single, at the end of every single day. So one of the big items that we have to really focus on are the common areas. So within the plan, we list all the common areas and you'd be disinfected during the day. It's just what you would think they would be. It's doorknobs, it's, uh, door handles, all those high-touch areas in any building, whether it's a school or a grocery store or whatever it is, um, we're gonna have our staff going through and just making rounds, our custodial staff making rounds, just always cleaning and disinfecting that, whether it's the, the restrooms, the handles, all those high-touch areas. We also, at the very end of the day, after, in, in addition to doing the classrooms, we will do the high-touch and common areas where we disinfect at the end of every single day. We, our restrooms will be stocked with supplies for hand washing, soap, paper towels, um, hand sanitizer and no-touch trash can. So that's something that, um, we're really committed to doing and we know that washing hands from everything that we've seen is the, the most effective, um, for 20 seconds. But if we can't do that, uh, then we'll, we'll have hand sanitizer on, uh, available for kids as well. As I said earlier, the cleaning schedule is, is in the plan. So that, that takes a look at some of the cleaning protocols. Our stop and start protocols, it's a 17-page document, um, that, that answers the common questions that we get and I've listed some of the common questions in the presentation that we have for people. You know, what does a school district do if someone is symptomatic at school or at home or on the bus? The protocols do all that, say all that for us and they, they let us know what we need to do. Who gets tested for COVID-19 and when? What does a district do if someone in the community tests positive and they're in close contact with a student or staff member? Protocols, 17 pages of them are all listed for us. What are the circumstances that students or staff need to quarantine? How do districts monitor, monitor COVID-19 in their community? Kathy Thompson, uh, our, our school lead nurse, our school physician, Dr. McCullough, they've been meeting on this, looking at it, they have a phone call again this Monday with all the nurses to review the protocols. So they've taken what the state has given us, which is pretty prescriptive and how we're gonna react to these and, um, they're gonna adapt them to what we need to do in, in Medfield. One important piece that we've been talking about, uh, with the superintendent's group that came up, uh, again, we've met with the commissioner again today, the second time, uh, this week, is that the state is gonna try to, um, determine what the metric is going to be for either an open or a closed situation for school. So if we're in a full in-person, um, or if we're in a hybrid, there's going to be some sort of metric that will be localized so that we will know whether or not it's time to go full remote or conversely, if we're in full remote or we're in hybrid and things are looking great, we can go full in-person, there's a metric that's gonna trigger that as well. So the state is working on that, they wanna, you know, really get it down to the weeds in terms of your, your community, uh, so they have the state, they have the county and they have the community so that we'll be able to look at what that data are and, you know, and certainly help us with our, with our decision-making. They told us to, you know, plan on that in the next couple of weeks. So that's an important piece and important tool because if you think back to March, there was really no trigger there. There was no, there was no metric, um, everyone was just kind of on their own, you know, one community would have someone whose, uh, sibling may have been exposed to someone with COVID-19 and schools were shutting down completely, if, if you remember all, of all that was going. So I think what we needed to do and what the state needed to do is provide us with some information that will allow us to make a, a real smart, educated, data-based decision and that's where the state is right now and we're, we're hoping to get that in the next couple of weeks. You know, one of the things that we've been fortunate enough with the CARES Act money, as much as I've complained about that process to you at school committee, uh, i- is that we've been able to purchase a lot of materials to keep both kids and staff safe. So looking at the PPE, you know, we have lots of gloves, lots of masks, uh, face shields, disposable shoe covers, isolation gowns, all that, uh, we've been stockpiling, we started buying it before the summer started, uh, the third floor of Town Hall, one room, uh, next to Christine's, just loaded with boxes of this stuff. So all of that was really important to us to get ahead of that so that we weren't trying to purchase when everyone else is trying to purchase that. The state, uh, told us that we need to at least have three months on hand, we're trying to get a little more than that. In my conversations with Kevin Ryder, our, um, uh, director of Park and Rec, he's been running the camp now for three or four weeks, I've been talking with him about how that's going and try to learn from some of the processes they're doing there because they've been incredibly successful with what they've been doing over there. He mentioned to me they're going through PPE a lot quicker than they thought they would. So that's, that's a telltale sign for us that we need to probably get more and purchase more, so that's been very, very helpful. Some of the key building supplies that we purchased, we have, and, and again, I've gone through this at other school committee meetings, so you've heard this before, but maybe some of the folks, uh, watching haven't, um, lots of hand sanitizer, free standing hand sanitizer dispensers at the, at the entrances of school so that folks come in, kids come in, they can do that hand sanitizing right away. On the touch-free Walmart, uh, Walmart hand sanitizers, all the disinfectant, uh, the five backpack electrostatic disinfectant sprayers, uh, the, what I kiddingly say, Michael with his, with Ghostbusters, that's, that's what they look like, they're backpacks and they work really, really well and fast. One of the things that we worked hard on this week is to make sure we could secure 20 by 20 tents for each school so that we can have them outside the school, they can be for learning, also for mask breaks where kids might need those. So we, we anticipate those coming in in a few weeks. The medical-grade isolation tents, so, you know, the story behind that is, is part of the regulations, we had to have a space in the building where we could isolate, um, anyone, whether it's a student or a staff member that is symptomatic. Uh, we don't have that room at any of our buildings. So we re- researched this, uh, Michael did a really good, a great job of this, um, we got medical-grade isolation tents, one for each school that we're going to place off the gymnasium, so the waiting room is the gymnasium and, um, in the isolation tent is, is where kids would go and if they're symptomatic. So, um, there's a whole process and whole protocol is along with that, that's also in the plan in terms of how we clean, uh, when we bring someone there, that is all in, in our plan as well. Plexiglas barriers are in every school office, um, so that, uh, that protects the students and any secretary of school staff that are in the office, uh, we put those in in June, so they've been in a while, again, trying to get ahead of what we thought would be a big rush right before school. We've been working with this company out of Franklin that's designing desk dividers for us. We have, we're purchasing desk dividers for, um, all elementary students, so, um, they are clear on three sides so that allows students to be able to see in front of them and their right and their left and we're looking at using those, um, i- in case we'll, i- if kids are eating lunch in the caf, in, in the classroom instead of the cafeteria, they'll be able to take their mask off, have these shields around them so they can eat and then put their mask right back on. So, um, you know, those are, we've, we've ordered 1,300 of those, uh, those should be coming in soon as well. One of the interesting things in the regulations that, uh, if anyone, whether it's in the medical tent or in the nurse's office, if we think is, uh, anything has been touched by someone that's symptomatic, that now becomes medical waste. So we needed to have, um, biohazard trash receptacle, so we have those as well, uh, medical supplies for the tents and we bought, um, a resting, one resting cot for each medical tent because we can only have one's child in there at a time. So that, you know, that has been all the, the purchasing that we've been doing and, and I think we're in, in really good shape with that. You know, we're, again, we tried to get a, ahead of that, so we weren't scrambling near the end of the, end of the summer to try to provide, you know, some of that, some of those supplies. So as we know, there are definitely behaviors that, that we can do as adults and that kids can do, um, that improve the safety within our building. So one of, the first one, as we look around and all of us have masks on, uh, mask is certainly one of the biggest, uh, things that we can do to improve safety. So there'll be signage within the buildings and on the front of the building before they come in, that mask required before entering. Mask required at all times for all staff and all students pre-K to 12 and the only exceptions we, we would make, uh, for meal and snack time, whether that's outside in a tent or in a, an area away from, from other students, um, the mask breaks and the medical exemption. So, um, one of the things that I'm gonna ask you to consider, which I put near the end, is, uh, trying to develop or come through with a mask policy for the district. I know that, um, the Mass Association of School Super, uh, School Committees, um, released a draft policy of that this week, um, so we could take a look at that and see if that, that works for us and adapt it for, for Medfield, but I thought it was a pretty good start and we can look at whether or not it fits our needs or not, but I think that's something that every district is gonna have to design, uh, because if we're all in the same boat in terms of requiring mask, uh, pre-K to 12, I don't know anyone that's not, that's not requiring that. And again, we'll work with the Board of Health, uh, especially with the masks because there definitely different levels of masks and when we have that conversation with the Board of Health, we need to know what their recommendation is. Is it the, uh, procedural mask like I have on right now? Is it, uh, something that someone can wear? If it's a neck, the neck gaiter, we need to get a clarification on that because we wanna make sure that, number one, um, every child has one when they come in and we wanna make sure they have the correct one. So that's something that we'll work closely with them on, um, and again, I talked about the mask policy for, for school committee. Obviously hand washing and hand sanitizing, we've been hearing that for months now, those are really important. We're gonna have the hand sanitizing stations at the entrance of every school, um, signage everywhere throughout the school. We have, we have examples of the signage in the plan, so if you wanna see what that looks like, you'll be able to look at the plan and see some of the signage. Each classroom and area in stairwell exit will provide either hands-free sanitizing dispenser, sink with soap and paper or a bottle of hand sanitizer. So we're trying to make every area, uh, in every school available for hand sanitizing because we know how important that is in prevention of, uh, spreading, spreading of the virus. Physical distancing, you know, is, is another in- important part of that. The Medfield Public Schools have adopted the physical distance of six feet. So that was kind of an issue we had in the beginning of this whole process when DESI's information came out in June, they were looking at three to six feet and everyone's like, oh, okay, three to six feet and then we started looking a little more and a lot of the science had six feet, six feet, six feet and other than the World Health Organization, no one had three feet. And then the subsequent, uh, guidance they came, that came to us from DESI all mentioned six feet, six feet, six feet, six feet and no mention of three feet. So, you know, one of the things that we did and we did as a district is go through every building, every classroom and take a look at manually how we can fit in students with a three-foot, uh, distance if we could do it. And then we did it electronically, three, four, five and six. And it was very clear from the beginning that we were able to fit in all students with a three-foot, um, some students with a four-foot physical distance, but we could not have all students in, uh, with a five and six-foot physical distance. So by adopting the physical distance of six feet as a district in, you know, with the blessing of the Board of Health, that essentially took the in-person model off the table for us for now, if we're gonna have the six feet. So, um, you know, we, we went through different models of that and I have slides that show some of the models on that, but we felt like that made the most sense, uh, in terms of safety for our students and our staff to keep it at six feet and that made much more sense than three feet. And again, um, I, I look back to, to what Steve Rush said on, at the Board of Health, is that the margin of error, when you have three feet physical distancing is very small. It's very small in a school environment, a margin of error with three. It gets much greater when you have six. So that to me sealed it, that is an important thing for us to, to look at the six feet and not, and not the three feet. So the, the desk-
Jeff, can I just clarify for one second? When you say that, uh, not, that you, that takes the in-person, that's the full-time intern?
Yes, thank you, thank you for that, yeah, so that, that full-time in-person, it takes, it takes that part out. Thank you, not for the, not for any other model, thank you. So, again, the classroom desk during meals, meal breaks, other times when masks are not worn, it's a minimum of six feet distance required and the preference really is 10 feet on that. So that, we're gonna look at that 10 feet a- as a preference when we go outside and we have mask breaks, you know, that's something that we're gonna look at, so, um, trying to be as safe as we can. So this gives you an idea of what it looks like in the classroom. So these are two classrooms, uh, in two different buildings with six-foot spacing. So for the most part, um, we can get between 11 and 13 desks in each classroom using six feet and that's looking at the range of all of our buildings. So if we go into a model that has half of our students, we're able to accommodate that with six feet, uh, so that, that gives you a good sense of what, what it looks like. I think the picture on the left gives you really, that's a good angle to show you what six feet, it's a good distance. It's a really good distance. Um, I think if we look at historically where we've been in schools, we've probably been about two, two feet, maybe three feet tops, um, so this really expands the area. And, and with that six feet, there'll still be an, an area i- in the front of the bill, uh, the front of the school, front of the classroom or the side of the classroom, depending on what the, the, um, the classroom looks like, where teachers are gonna remain in that same area. So we're gonna kinda have a buffer there where teachers need to remain, um, six feet away from their students. And again, people are saying, well, well, how does that work? Because, you know, much of what we do, especially the younger grades, is, is kinda that one-to-one and that's, that's some of the things that are working out right now. Those are some of the details, when I said in the beginning, well, how's that gonna work? How's that gonna work? I will say that school will look very different than it ever has. So I don't want anyone to think that, that if we, if and when we go back to school, it's the same thing with just masks on, that's, that's not what it is. It's, it's very different, it's, it's going to have, um, you know, less students in there, less, uh, close contact, all of that is going to be there as part of this, as part of the plan. So, um, I just wanna make sure that folks aren't thinking that it's just gonna be the same thing as it always has, just, you know, with masks on, because that's, that's not the case. Air quality and ventilation obviously is, is a big piece of this and, um, we've done a lot of work on that already and still now have some, some work to do. So we've done here, we're working on air quality tests i- in each building, we don't have all five done yet, uh, really pricey for that, by the way, um, extremely pricey. Fortunately, we have additional CARES Act that we can spend on that, spend on that because that's really pricey. One of the things that's been helpful for us is that we have someone that consults, um, in, with us that works at a major hospital in Boston, um, and, and- Um, and and right from the get-go, we were the first ones in the area to get the, the MERV thirteens, uh, the hospital grade filters. In my, in my groups, everyone is, is really chimed in on that after, especially after the guidance came about facilities. We had them in there long before that. Um, fortunately, working with that consultant, that was very, very helpful. Um, we have a, a preventive maintenance schedule on those filters that will change them um, a, a few times a year. We have an outside company doing that for us so that if our custodians and maintenance, if custodian and maintenance crew get busy doing something else and aren't going to forget about that. It's a preventative maintenance schedule that will be on for those filters. Another thing that is, is interesting is the exchange of fresh air. Uh, so typically in, in most buildings and most schools, the exchange rate is about fifteen percent. And um, in the, the systems go on and off just really when school is in session. So what, what we've been learning and what we've been um, advised on is to increase that, that fresh air to twenty-five percent and then leave these systems on twenty-four seven. So really not shutting them down at all, just keeping them running all the time. Um, so once we get um, a sense of what repairs we may need and system, we're going to do that as needed. Um, right now, so far, the news has been good around that, uh, but we still have a couple of air tests that we need to do in other buildings. Uh, we're not going to use any rooms without windows. So you know, that creates some problems because there are classrooms in this building that, that don't have working windows. So we, we have to recapture other spaces. So the space we're in right now probably recaptured for a class. And it will need to, we'll need to do that as well. So we, we're going through every school and making sure that number one, there's, there's windows accessible that can be opened because that's, you know, the guidance around that. And then number two, if we don't have um, air coming in because there's no windows, then we are trying to recapture other areas to make sure we have classes in there instead. Uh, and then we're looking at the, the air purifiers and box fans. Those are both, if you, if you heard an NPR, NPR had a um, a doctor on that said, one of the best things you can do in any space is have a box fan in the window to circulate air. So we're looking at use around that to see what we can do around that and then air purifiers as well. So the, the ventilation I know has been um, just like the cleaning and the, and the disinfecting is a really important issue. But we've, we've been on it since uh, this whole thing started and really tried to make sure that uh, we're ahead of the game on that. So we feel good about that. Um, again, it's extremely expensive uh, to, to do all this. But uh, we've had some uh, assistance from the CARES Act that's helped us out. So other building uh, changes that were, that just again, at a high level is, is much more detail in the plan. Um, so we're looking at lunch right now, um, elementary in their classrooms. Blake is looking at lunch in three designated areas so that we bring the numbers down and have kids six, at least six feet apart having lunch. And then we're looking at a grab and go model at the high school where they end their day at one, one fifteen. And then they grab their lunch and they can either go home at that point, eat at home, or they can either find a spot on campus outside. But you know, trying to really um, minimize the amount of, of time that they're, that kids are together that aren't in their grade level cohort. So uh, that's what we looked at there. Uh, I know I've had some questions around recess, you know, you're going to get rid of recess? No, we're not going to get rid of recess. I think it's important. Uh, we all know it's important for kids to be outside and run around. But there will be much smaller numbers at recess and they'll be in separate areas. Uh, they won't be able to um, intermingle cohorts as far as their recess. We're probably not going to do the recess before school right now. That doesn't seem to, to work as far as um, keeping cohorts of kids together. So now we're still looking at that, but that's our thinking right now is not going to have that recess, just have the before lunch recess at the elementary level. And then looking at our arrival and dismissal times, uh, we definitely have to stagger those and change those. You'll see in the plan that we've adjusted the starting times to the high school, middle school and the elementary schools so that uh, we were able to do the bus transportation, which I'll get into. Um, certainly we're limited by the capacity of what we, who we can transport right now because of uh, what the regulations are around transporting kids and buses. So we have to stagger that uh, dismissal time. I mean, if you think about less kids riding the bus at the middle school, high school level and having this exact same start times we have now. Imagine what the traffic would be like out here at arrival and dismissal. We just, it wouldn't, wouldn't work very well. So we have to stagger those times a little bit to make sure that uh, we'll be able to safely get kids in and out uh, without a mad rush at the beginning and, and all of the, the traffic issues that come with that. So I'm going to get into the three models, um, hybrid, remote and in-person. Um, I will say that uh, one of those is a lot more detailed than the other two. And all three are very, very detailed in the plan. So if you want to look at what a model day looks like with uh, examples for every, every level in all three of these plans, it's all in the, it's all in the plan. So you'll be able to look at what a remote model looks like uh, at the high school. And you can look at what a hybrid model looks like at the elementary school, et cetera. So um, I encourage people to look at that, excuse me, as we, as we go through. So um, if we're looking at a hybrid model, um, there are many different models out there that we've looked at. And I think we talked a lot about this in our group, both the building base and the district level. Um, there's some belief that a week on, week off was the best model. That was the state was, was kind of pushing that in the beginning. Um, the other model that we looked at is a, an A B A B model where you have a group of kids that are in cohort A and a group of kids in cohort B and you alternate days. Um, and then another one is the A A B B model where you have the same cohort, cohort of kids in A coming to school at the same time on, on, on two days in a row. And then B kids, they come to school two days in a row so that um, there's really no issue around um, the crossing of the cohorts of kids. So uh, what we looked at and what we thought was the best way to do it was, was look at a cohort A with last names A through K and a cohort B with last names L through Z. And we did this because we wanted to keep families together. So we, we thought it would be really difficult. Uh, if you had a cohort model that is different at the elementary, that would be different at the middle school and the high school. We wanted to make sure that families were together in the same cohort. So we looked at splitting it that way. And we're trying to get a balance right now. It doesn't come out exactly fifty-fifty, but um, it's, it works better in some buildings and others. So we, we're still working on that a little bit. Um, so for an example, students in cohort A uh, would attend in-person full day school, school days, Mondays and Tuesdays. And then participate remotely on Wednesdays, Thursdays and Fridays. Students in cohort B would participate remotely Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, and then attend school full days on Thursdays and Fridays. So if you see the model, everyone is remote on Wednesday. So we were able to have um, a model where uh, the, both cohorts can come together remotely one day a week. Um, teachers can work with those kids together um, through Zoom remotely and either establish, you know, what it's going to look like in terms of curriculum on Thursday, Friday, and then the following Monday, Tuesday. Um, or do some SEL uh, work where they get to make connections with kids. I think that's one of the hardest things in any of these remote. It's a, it's a heck of a lot easier doing a remote uh, program when you've had the kids for almost a full year. It's a lot harder to start out with that because you get to build those relationships. And that's what education is all about, relationships is, it's hard to do that when you're looking through Zoom all the time. So um, I think that's, that's something that we can, you know, really put a focus on um, on Wednesdays and the SEL and doing that. And then looking at Wednesdays where we would have an hour, a half day on Wednesday remote. And then in the afternoon would be uh, teachers working together, planning um, and then doing some professional development. So that's kind of where we are with, with that one. Um, so then we have cohort C. So cohort C would be students that we identify as students that are at risk. And we would try to get them in face-to-face instruction uh, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. So what we're looking at is, and we had a question about this today, isn't it, aren't we just going to duplicate the same thing for uh, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday? In some cases, yes. Um, however, there's a, there's a few different models we could use with cohort C. You know, those students, some could benefit from having instruction on the same thing twice. Um, some could benefit from having assistance from uh, a teacher assistant or a teacher on that second day, that second two days they're in to work with them on the work that they're trying to do independently. So there's all different ways that we can do that. And I think that's, we're not just going to have kids um, sit in the same room and hear the same thing again. If they've already, um, if they understand it and can work with it, we'll expand and, and they can either do their lessons or do their independent work with support, or they can stay in there. So that's, again, that's what some of the details are working out on that. One of the things in cohort C that potentially could happen, and you know, I've talked about this, it seems like forever now, um, at meetings, uh, is that uh, we've been working as a regional group of superintendents to try to make sure that if, if towns go hybrid, that teachers um, children would be able to come all four days. So for example, if you are a teacher in Medfield and you um, live in Westwood, then um, your kids would go to Westwood School for their hybrid four days and they wouldn't have to go just the two days. And that is something that helps out our workforce, obviously, because uh, we need to make sure our teachers are here because we can't run any program without our teachers. So um, that was an important piece. So this, we brought that to the state, uh, the state liked that and the, and we brought it to a meeting. We had a meeting a few weeks ago with the commissioner. We um, suggested that to him. He brought it back uh, to the folks at Desi. Uh, we asked him about it again today. Uh, he said the state's still working on that. So I think what we're going to do regionally in our superintendent groups is try to come to some sort of agreement among the districts in this area to at least do that and really not wait for Desi on that. Because I think we're, if we're waiting for Desi on that, we may find out on September fifth, that, oh yeah, you guys can do that. Uh, we don't have time for that and our teachers don't have time for that. So um, that's, that's an additional group that may be in, in cohort C. So uh, you'll probably, if you're a parent, you'll get an email from me next week asking for information if you are a teacher in the public schools in Massachusetts and you have any students, uh, if you have children K to eight, then we want to hear from you because then we need to have that collaboration among the districts to figure that out. So that's again, a strong possibility for cohort C. And then looking at cohort D. So if we have um, parents who say, you know what, I don't want my kid participating any in-person learning. I want them to be fully remote. Um, we'll put those, those kids will be part of cohort D. Um, and those students will be assigned to Medfield Virtual Academy, which will be an, an online platform uh, that will have in concert with, with Desi. And they'll be assigned to a Medfield teacher or teacher assistant to oversee their progress. But that's a lot of self-paced um, online learning that we'll do. And I know that one of the questions is like, well, if I say that for, if I have that for my kid in the beginning, you know, what if in October I want my child to go back, you know, to a, a hybrid or in-person or whatever? So we're going to have to put in procedures around that because we can't have folks jump back and forth, back and forth. Uh, because we need to be able to maintain, we need to, number one, make sure the instruction and learning is happening. And number two, um, if you're in cohort D, you've been taken out of a classroom that's already been assigned. And we need to make sure that you can go back to that same classroom or if you're going to be placed in a different room. So um, there's a lot to that. So folks can't jump back and forth, jump back and forth. You know, fortunately for us, um, Leo has been really instrumental in that work. He's been working with the state on that as a consultant. So um, we had a little insider information on some of that stuff. I appreciate that, Leo. And uh, I know that he's, he's listed as a contact now for, for Desi if, if folks have questions about that. So I think we're in good hands there and we'll be able to develop a pretty good program um, for those kids whose parents choose not to send them to school. So in that hybrid model, you have an A and B, which is the majority of our kids. We have a C cohort, which is kids that um, could be identified as high risk that we're going to get in four times, optionally four times a week. That, that's our goal. And um, and then children whose uh, whose parents are teachers. And then looking at uh, cohort G, which would be the Medfield Virtual Academy. So we have four different options in that hybrid model um, that can really tailor to any, any child in our district. This gives you an example of what it may look like. So um, sometimes when people look at this initially, they think that it's morning and afternoon. Don't look at it that way. So um, if you look on Monday, um, A and C um, cohorts, that means the blue means they're in person. So on Monday and Tuesday, they're in person and B is in remo- is in remote on that day. So don't think of it as morning, afternoon, because you'll get confused. Uh, on Wednesday, A, B and C are remote in the morning. And we have that all structured and explained in our plan when you take a look at it. And teacher professional development happens uh, whether it's planning or PD um, in the afternoon. Thursday, we flip that. So A becomes remote and B and C become in-person. So one of the reasons why we chose this for our hybrid model is because a lot in the medical model was about one week on, one week off. And when we did our, our consultation and our school physician felt like this was just almost as close as one week on, one week off, based on the amount of time a cohort's going to be together and the kids are gone. So you have A and C um, on Monday, Tuesday, and then everyone's remote. So we'll do a deep cleaning on Wednesday as part of, you know, our protocols and that's all in our plan. And then Thursday, B and C in-person, A remote. And then at the end of each evening, um, you know, and each day we are, we are doing a disinfecting and clean throughout all the buildings. Um, so that was a way for us to make sure that there's some in-person for kids and we make that relationships and we have those connections. And we can start to get back to normalcy a little bit, you know, by having kids going to school, which is so important for all of us. And yet um, allows it for a, a safer number of kids being there. So half the class essentially will be in each school. Very detailed uh, examples in the plan, but I want to just share this one with you right now. Um, this gives you an idea of what the hybrid model might look like at Blake. So if we take a sixth, seventh and eighth grader, um, school would start at seven fifty and they'd go into advisory meetings. So you go straight into advisory. There'll be no, you know, congregating in the, uh, uh, in the gym or outside. They go right into their advisory classroom. Academic in content, the related arts classes happen from eight, ten to twelve forty, straight through we're running periods in a bell schedule, which is in the appendix of, of our plan. A mask break happens at somewhere around nine twenty-five or nine forty. Um, and then you look at the lunch advisory again, so three separate lunch periods and advisory offsetting those. So that's typical of what we do now in Blake. Sometimes they have recess outside. That's, I know something that Nat and Kelly are considering. And then um, academic in content-related areas uh, happen at real arts again, twelve forty-five to two oh five with dismissal at two oh five. So again, it's very structured. Um, and it's, it's trying to get very close to what we have normally. But you'll see that the chain, the times have been adjusted and changed and that's really driven by making sure we have staggered openings and the transportation issues that we have, uh, which we'll get into transportation. So students in the hybrid model will be expected to engage in the following amount, minimum amount of synchronous instructions. That's live instruction synchronous happening live on your computer. Asynchronous instruction, which may be a recording that kids can watch over and over again, which a lot you hear sometimes with flip classroom or student-related activities from home per week. Um, this is addition to the face-to-face instruction. So we're looking at, at Memorial having nine hours of additional instruction. And that, again, that is synchronous, asynchronous, student-directed activities. So what would synchronous look like in those nine hours for say Memorial, Wheelock or Dale? Well, every kid would log on um, and have, and be part of the morning meeting. And they could be all part of that and they could kind of set what they need to do for the day, do their work. And then come back again at the end of the day for another meeting or it could be midday. All those things are being worked out right now as far as what that looks like. But the plan does give some pretty good examples of, of what that can look like. Um, we, we bump it up at Dale to twelve hours. So that becomes a essentially four hours of uh, student work, instruction happening at the grade four, five level. And um, Blake in, in the high school, we're looking at five hours per day. So definitely bumping up what kids had in the spring. There's no question about that. So there's attendance taking, taken, there's um, all that information. It's like a regular school day, expectations of what they're going to do. It's not, you know, log on when you want to, when you feel like it. No more. That's over. So um, whether it's a remote plan, uh, fully remote, or if it's a remote day on a hybrid schedule, days will be much more structured for all of our kids and all of our teachers in that regard. So I think that's something that we learned in the springtime and, and made some adjustments. So looking at the remote model, and we won't go into as much detail on this because we've, we've experienced it, but just give you a sense of what that would look like. Um, we, we're thinking about Wednesdays being kind of the day that, that we kick off any units or lessons because everyone's together remotely and then we can work on them on the A and B cohorts. Excuse me, eight, I'm sorry, I got the hybrid and the remote confused. We're still going to kick off on Wednesdays and that's how we, we plan uh, the units. And then um, Thursday, Friday, and then Monday, Tuesday in the remote model, where all kids are together. Uh, we feel like that's a, and teachers gave us feedback around that, that that makes sense for them. You know, looking at uh, following forty-five to sixty-minute meetings, K to eight, small group breakout meetings, opportunities to meet with teachers, all that. So that, again, assigning a structure to what that will look like instead of, you know, I'll see you at maybe at one o'clock on Tuesday. Like that, that stuff is over. Um, it's, it's a structured time and making sure that, that kids have support and um, be getting the instruction that they need during that, during that time. That's a really important change in what we've, what we're presenting in the, in the, in the plan. And you'll see a very detailed uh, schedule, what that might look like in a remote model. Students will engage in mixes Zoom meetings. Students will engage in a mix of Zoom meetings, student-directed activities. Um, you know, we're looking at thirty minutes per meeting at the elementary level, forty-five minutes per meeting in the secondary level. And again, they'll follow a regular schedule with a combination of small group and large group learning experiences. So one of the reasons why we adopted Zoom is Zoom has a great capacity for small group and breakout rooms. And when we utilize our teaching assistants, they can um, oversee students in the breakout rooms and that's worked really, really well. Um, you can't get that yet in Google Classroom and Google, Google Meet, but I think that's. That's going to be something that they do, but we just, we can't wait until, you know, they, they figure that out in the Google end. Um, Zoom has been very, very good with that and our teachers have been giving us great feedback of how that worked, especially. As they got more comfortable in May and June, you know, working with those breakout rooms. So looking at the minimum hours of daily instruction in remote. Again, looking at three for Memorial and Wheelock, four at Dale, um, and then Blake. Looking at five at Blake and the high school. So trying to really, you know, ramp up the expectations in. In the work that kids are doing. Um, we think that's, that's a real important piece of the remote plan is. Um, we did a really good job in the beginning because it was emergency. Now we have time to plan. It's no longer an emergency. Um, so that, that whole um. Percentage of time and instruction really gets ramped up in the remote plan uh, this time around. So looking at the in-person model, uh, you know, a typical day at the elementary might be starting at nine o'clock again, driven by. The issues around busing and transportation. Um, kids will do what they normally do in the class, but with a lot of safety, safety precautions and protocols in place. Um, so they'll have their, all their typical studies in enrichment opportunities, art, music, health, wellness, world language. Um, lunches again will occur in the classroom. So this is the in-person. Uh, Blake students arrive at about seven fifty, like we said, in the, in the in-person for hybrid. They go right into advisory, um, and then they have all their, their typical classes as part of the, the schedule. Um, again, lunches and will be staggered and passing periods will be monitored. Trying to get one-way hallways as much as we can. Again, all on our plan. Um, high school will begin their day at seven thirty, seven classes each day. Um, and what, what, what we're trying to do and the high school's done a really good job with this is trying to establish grade level wings. As much as possible. So it doesn't work really well for science, but it works for the other disciplines where. We can essentially have the kids uh, stay in a, in a certain wing. As a cohort, as a grade level, and they've done a really good job working on that. So. Um, some more details of that will come out from the high school, but um, that, that's our plan right now is to keep kids together in those cohorts. Um. So I think, you know, the wellness and music classes have to be adapted and we have to look at what Desi has put out for that. Um, and the health and safety standards. So it's going to look really different on some of those areas, but. Uh, Desi has come out with that information for us to follow and make sure that it's safe for both our students and our staff. So student supports, obviously is something that's really important to us. Um, with special education, it looks different in the remote learning model, the hybrid model and the in-person model. I think one of the things that, that Mary's worked real hard on, and I know that. Uh, it's, it's come out of the, the guidance as well is that our special education population is to really prioritize in-person services as much as possible. And that's really critical. There are some services that we can't and will remain remote. Um, but we need to make sure that we try to prioritize when it's safe um, in-person services. So. We have a lot in our plan on that, but I'll just go through. The in-person certainly, um, you know, in-person with our special educators spacing, use of tabletop dividers. Um, and, and all those good teaching practices that we know will be part of the in-person learning. However, we'll just have the safety precautions that are involved in that. Um, and then looking at uh. The special education piece with cohort C, you know, they've talked a lot about. Um, focusing on and prioritizing the students that have the following, students with multiple disabilities. Um, students who will need more time to learn new procedures and protocols to increase their success, successful re-entry in the fall. And then students whose level engagement or remote learning during the closure was low. So that's some of the criteria that. That the department has given us to look at who is going to qualify um, under cohort C, but I know that. Mary and her staff are working hard on that to identify other criteria to make sure that we, we target um, the, the correct kids for the cohort.
Do you have um, occasionally maybe any targets at all, like in terms of numbers on cohort C?
Do you have any numbers?
Um, right now we are trying to finalize the exact criteria. Um, so it kind of depends on the populations. We're also trying to look at kids that um, fall under the umbrella of foster care. Um, and homelessness as well as the EL students that would need to be in person. So we're collecting all of that data um, and trying to kind of make sure that what we have, we're able to meet the needs of everyone. But again, trying to prioritize. This level um, as well as looking at prioritizing in-person services and how we can maximize that as well.
Can I just take this opportunity to remind folks that in the Q and A, um, please make sure that your name. Your, your full name is, is listed versus anonymous, or if it's listed as anonymous, write it somewhere in the Q and A, please. Thank you.
So English learners, um, you know, Gigi and her staff have done a really good job trying to make sure they include those students in the learning. So we're going to continue to do that. Um, and then any new students that need to have the English skills assessed will be reaching out to them as well. So that's. An important part of, of what we're doing with student support. Transportation. I guess the, the key phrase for transportation is the very limited capacity. Uh, if you look on the screen, you'll see that this is a seventy-one passenger bus with the, the, with physical distancing, the mass capacity. Max capacity is twenty-three passengers. Um, you know, one of the things that you'll see in the yellow dot is a bus monitor, which was in the. Guidance and that's optional and we're still having conversations around that, um, because that would be hiring additional staff and um. We're still talking about what that might look like. As of right now, we don't have a, a bus monitor, but that's something that we will absolutely consider and, and continue to go through. And, and revisit. There's no doubt. I know that Mike was talking with the bus company about that. And um, we're continuing to, to have those conversations. So, you know, basically in terms of the bus transportation, everyone's required to wear a mask. Um, students have the mask required from their family and we'll have extra disposal masks on every bus. That's something we've talked to the bus company about. Um, any student that appears ill or is not feeling well, we just can't let that student on the bus and that's really in the regulations. So we're. We're hoping that, that parents are that first line of defense where they can do a spot check of their child to make sure they're feeling okay. And, and do that. So that's, that's, we're really counting on parents to do that. Uh, we have the signs posted certainly at every bus. We have signs everywhere. So. Uh, I think that's, there'll be training with the bus drivers too, so that they understand, you know, what to look for and. And how to talk to kids and families and those types of things. So Michael will be doing a training with them. Uh, to make sure that they can identify or at least do the best they can to identify if someone is not, not feeling well. If a child gets sick during the day, uh, they won't be permitted to ride the bus home. Parents have to pick them up. Um, no more than one student per bench. And the only, the only thing that we've gotten out of the, the guidance around uh. Double seating, so to speak, is that kids that are in the same family, the same household can sit together on the bus. So that. That's the only um, only provision there that, that allows for that. Uh, buses will be disinfected after every run. That's really critical. Uh, we've talked to the bus company about that and they will, you know, wipe it down and disinfect it after every run because. We may be in a situation as we develop the bus runs where uh, elementary might have two separate runs. So we might be going out once. And getting kids in, at one school or another school and going out a second time. So we're still working with the bus company on, on the structure of that and what that looks like. But that's really why we had to address the times for both the, the middle school, high school and elementary. Is to make sure that we could include all kids. So it might include those double runs. So that's. An important consideration. Again, that's part of the more to come as we, as we go through this process.
Jeff?
Um, yeah.
If uh, in the bus situation, if siblings are allowed to sit together, does that allow more capacity? Because that seat has two siblings? So, or does that take away from the total that can ride the bus?
I'm pretty sure it takes away from the total that can ride the bus. I'd have to double check that. Am I right on that, Michael? Yeah, I think just that capacity of twenty-three is, is it, you know? We, we had talked to the commissioner and the state because we, we waited a long time for these and, you know, part of the. And I know I've talked to you about that, um, all of you about how there's so many layers to this process. So I know that Desi had this completed. Um, and it took twenty days by the time they had it completed to the time we got it. And it's because it went through so many layers uh, of folks after Desi. To make sure that they all agree to it and they can release that. So a lot of this. You know, I think some of the frustration is that we have an incredible sense of urgency. Um, and we sometimes feel like that isn't shared at the state level uh, with anyone, not just, you know, the, the administration, but everywhere. Uh, don't share that same sense of urgency that we have. So. Um, you're just knowing that that took that long. It, and we were told today that. All athletics, we're going to tell us what's happening with fall athletics next, next week. So we're going to get a definite answer on that. Uh, so, you know, all these things, we've been asking for that for, you know. Weeks and weeks and weeks. Not that that's the biggest thing on our agenda, but we know that, that is important to families and kids. So. We want to be able to tell them what they're doing. Um, so, you know, that's, that whole piece is really, really critical and. You know, there's a couple of things that we still need to do with our plan. That's why we call it a draft, but it's pretty much. Uh, pretty much all set. We just want to complete and insert an FAQ. So whether it's questions that we've gotten or questions that some of you have gotten, um, we want to make sure we include that. It's not required. In the plan, we won't include that. Uh, we're just working on a quick executive summary to put in the front of it. Uh, that we think is important to do that if someone doesn't want to read the seventy pages. Um, and then I think that the two other things that are key, um, looking at. Considering a mask and face covering policy as a district. I think that's probably something we should, if we want to consider that, do that fairly quickly. Um, fortunately or unfortunately, we have meetings every week to, I think, till the end of time. So we should be able to do it. Um, get that done if we want to do that. And then certainly continue negotiations uh, with the teachers' union. That's going to be critical to whatever. Uh, we roll out. Uh, we do have, we had a meeting today and we have three scheduled the next week and have so. Um, hopefully we can, we can make some headway there and, and come to an agreement that we all can live with and. So that's, that's where we are there. Um, and again, so my recommendation to you. Uh, is that we begin the school year in an A, A, B, B hybrid model that begins on September sixteenth. So the September sixteenth school day is really in response to. The MOU that the commissioner and the three teachers' unions in the state came, came to last week. In which they reduced the student year to one hundred seventy days and um. Wanted the additional ten days of mandatory training and planning for teachers in the district. So. Um, where we were scheduled to start with teachers on the thirty-first of August. Um, we would like to start with teachers on the first of September and I, I mentioned that to them today. So that we could do the ten days and start on the Wednesday. As I said before, that's kind of, the Wednesday is going to be a kickoff day for. Uh, some of the learning that we're doing so that everyone starts together in a hybrid. We really want to be able to use um, some of those days. Some of those ten required days uh, for families and kids to come into the school. Uh, and get a chance to meet their teacher, um, get a chance to see their classroom because it's going to look very different. And um, and just have kind of a, a, a very structured, super structured. Kind of open house to kind of meet and greet, come in and then leave, kind of, so that everyone has, it's great. The unknown isn't great, right? So if you have a great visual or you have a visual of what it's going to look like on that first Thursday or that first Monday you come to school. That's really helpful for families and for kids. So we want to try to incorporate that into those ten days. Uh, as you know, what we, the superintendent's group, we asked. The commissioner if we could do less than ten days and then spread those out uh, during the school year so that. Uh, in case we have to pivot to a different model, we would have a date of plan for that because we don't usually get a, a notice. More than twelve or twenty-four hours before we have to do that. Uh, and that wasn't the spirit of the agreement between the groups. So we are mandated to do those ten days prior. Uh, which I think is helpful for us. I think it's going to be great to, to. Do a mix of in-person and remote training in those ten days. And I think it's important to. To get everyone together at some point and, and have some of those conversations, but teachers need some time to plan. And these, these ten days will, will definitely give that to them. So. That's my recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions and I know that. Um, a lot of the questions will probably be answered once the, the plan is released later on today. So.
Right. Thank, thank you very much, Dr. Marsden and the whole team who, who put this together. This was a monumental task, but um, before we open it up to questions in the Q and A and then before we um, ask our own questions and vote. Um, I just want to reiterate that it's my understanding. Because I know there are questions about why is school committee voting tonight and not giving folks some, some time to, to digest this? But it's my understanding that um, we need to take a vote in order for um, the negotiations to properly start with. The um, teachers' union.
Yeah, so we, we need to, um, you know, in order for us to start having those really meaningful conversations around MOA. They need to work off an approved plan. So if there's no approved plan, then we can't have those conversations because there's really, there's no direction. So. Um, I think that, that's, that's a critical piece of us moving forward. Is that you, you folks vote on that tonight, whether it's my recommendation of hybrid or whatever you think is better. Uh, I, we need to get an, an approved plan and a vote so that we can go forward. I mean, I think. I mean, this is happening in every community. So um, it, it isn't. I guess I got to be clear about a couple of things. One is, is that. It's not, you get to choose, you know, if, if you, if you really feel passionate about the in-person, you can't say, well, I want to be doing in-person. And someone else can say, I want to do hybrid and someone else say, I want to be, that's not what this is. This is. A district deciding what it's going to be. And then the, the option that people have would be to do the virtual learning academy. This is the same thing that every town is going, going through right now. I've talked to my colleagues in Westwood. I've talked to my colleagues in. Uh, Walpole, Dover Sherbon, um, Midway, Millis, Ashland, all today. It's the same thing everywhere. So. School committee, again, this was a pivot on the state. If you remember our conversations earlier. Eighty-five to ninety percent was going to be driven by the state in mandatory. And they backed way off from that and said. By the way, it's local control. Your school committees decide what you do. So that was a. Huge disappointment for all of us because we thought we were in a situation where the state was going to. Give us all that direction and then uh, mandate what we do so that we're all doing the same thing. Um, now we're in a situation like we were in March where every town is doing their own individual thing. By the way, almost all hybrid. And, and then every town now has to negotiate with their teachers' unions, which. You know, takes up a heck of a lot of time and it's something that all of us. Were hoping was not going to happen and both sides, union and, and um, administration, but that's, that's just the way it is. So. Uh, we can't do anything about that, but that's a huge pivot that happened at the state level that, that changed how we were going to approach this from. And I, I will say that the clarification that we've been given at the state level is. Well, eighty-five to ninety percent of the medical. Stuff is mandated. No kidding. Um, so that's, that's the frustration. Um, and, and again, I've been on that working group for the last month and a half. With superintendents and Desi and all these issues. Um, I, I can tell you that it's the same thing in the Berkshires as it is in Medfield. It's the same frustration, same kind of issues going on. I would say the survey data that we, I showed you tonight is the same survey data they have in the Berkshires, Western Mass, North Shore, South Shore. The Cape, Merrimack Valley, South, um, South Worcester County Roundtable. It's all the same data. Same thing. Parents want all kids in, no questions, the majority. Um, teachers are looking at hybrid, remote. Um, and very few want in-person. And there, there's a huge tension state, statewide with all of this. So. I'm not sure how it's all going to play out and what the end game's going to be, but. What we're experiencing in Medfield and what every school committee and superintendent is experiencing in Medfield is no different than what's happening statewide. And the state, Desi has charged this board, this body. To make the decision on what we start the school year with. So it's not a vote. It's not a popularity contest. It's not none of that. The state has said the school committee will decide what it is. So I made a recommendation as superintendent, which I think is best. For all kids at this point right now. Um, as I said in my message and that. My goal for this whole thing has been to have every kid, every day in person. That's been my goal all summer. Um, and it's just, it just can't happen right now. And um, I feel bad about that. I feel bad that. Um, any, any decision or any vote or any recommendation that isn't all in-person. For many families, that's problematic. I feel bad for, for that. I just, you know, I know it's an issue. I, it's an issue for our staff because. You know, you have staff uh, working, living in other towns and they're doing different things and it's, it's really. We tried to avoid all this by having the state do one kind of plan for all of us. And um, it just didn't happen. So we're back to where we were in March and we're doing the best that we can. And, and at the end of the day, we're doing what we think is best for kids and that's, I, I'll be happy with that. That's where we are.
All right. Thank you. Um, do you guys have any immediate questions or can I dive right into the Q and A?
Um, you know, I think that people are, I have questions, but I've also, but I think that. People who have hung with us for the last uh, you know, hour and whatever and are asking questions and there are forty of them piling up. I think that it's, it's really appropriate to let people kind of understand. Where, and, and get their questions met. I don't know what the rest of the committee feels that way, but I, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, mine, mine only is more clarification.
Yeah, please.
We're voting on a plan.
We're voting on a plan that we all expect is going to change. In other words, we, we expect it. It is. It's a recommendation today for hybrid, but we are also looking at what does it look like for virtual and what does it look like for in-person? That's really the way I'm looking at it with, we want to start the year off in a hybrid model. Right? Learn as best we can and adjust. Am I saying that?
Yeah, your decision is really when we start the start date, you know, because you, you folks, and I'll bring a, a new calendar to the next meeting because we have a whole lot of half-day release days in there that we're not going to do anymore.
Right.
As long as we're in a hybrid, we're not going to do those because we have that built in on Wednesdays now. So it, it's really what model we start the year with and what day we start. I mean, that's, that, those are the two decisions that you're charged with.
Great. Again, a reminder, if folks could pretty please have their name written in the question, if it's not the header. But Leanne Harvey, this plan is dependent upon getting time, timely results, results of COVID-19 testing. At this time, test results are taking one to two weeks to be resulted. How will Medfield schools deal with suspected COVID cases when we can't get results for two weeks?
Yeah, that's, that's a problem in the entire state right now. I know that they're trying to do the rapid testing and try to get something with that. We were told by the commissioner today that there's, there could be some sort of testing protocol for students and staff that is enacted statewide. And we would, we wouldn't hear for the next couple of weeks on that, but it's just a lot of balls in the air with them. You know, they're trying to figure out what to do with that. And that's, you know, we're, we're hearing things like seven to 10 days on, on tests or at least five days. So it's, it's a problem not just for Medfield, it's a problem for every school district. And we're just going to have to work our way through it and, and see what we can do at the state level, see if they're going to help us with that. But that's, that's a real concern we all have. No question about it, Leanne.
That's, that's also, I'm sorry, but I have to say that I think that that is also an area where parents can really help us out. Because if a kid comes to school and he has symptoms of, you know, a bad chest cold, these things will still happen, right? But that child is sent home with a cough. Then many of the children around him conceivably may also have to be quarantined for that period of time and tested.
It's, so it's all in the, I mean, I think if people have questions around that, just look at the link on the, on the, on the plan. It's stop star protocols. It's, it's 17 pages, but it will tell you, answer all your questions for you on that.
Yeah. But, but there has to be a level of parent respect for the entire community. So that even if you think, ah, you're okay, maybe it's, maybe it's worth keeping that kid home that day just to see how that works out. And I know that that is hard, but it's also for a small community and we need to be responsible for each other in many, many ways, as we have been for the last six months. Thank you.
Sorry, I'll ask one of the anonymous questions because it's a, I think it's a decent one. So I'll ask it on myself. If that's okay? With all the Monday holidays, how will you account for cohort A with all those missed holiday Mondays?
I'm sorry, I was reading the questions. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask it about a part of the anonymous person because it's been asked a couple of times. What would we do?
We've counted it out. It equals out, like maybe one day different. So we've counted it out from, from now until say Thanksgiving or December 1st, it equals out.
Okay.
Yeah, it equals out. You think about, you have a couple of Monday holidays, then you have Thanksgiving, which is a Thursday, Friday. So it equals out. It might be plus or minus one, but it's, it's pretty close.
Okay.
Beautiful. Thank you. Another one from Leanne Harvey. How can I ask informed questions about a plan that I have not had access to? Will we have the opportunity to ask questions in a forum like this after we have all had time to read the plan? How can, how can SC vote before the community has had enough time to see the plan and ask questions? I think we addressed that at the, at the beginning. We really need to.
Maybe, should we reiterate that?
Yeah, absolutely. And also I think it's important to reiterate that the, the reentry committee, correct, was over 90 people? Teachers, parents, nurses, healthcare professionals, students, et cetera, administrators. I think we, we have to, at this point, have to trust the process and, and reiterate that it, no, it's not going to be perfect. But we have an obligation to make our vote tonight based on the knowledge that we have, expecting, just like Tim said, that it may change. And so that the union can start negotiating.
Yes.
All right.
And I would tell you that, again, I, I mean, I'm not, because of, try to be nice about this. So I've talked to, again, colleagues in other communities that are doing the exact same thing we are because you're working on this document right up until this meeting. Like, we were, we were working on it up until, you know, 15 minutes before the meeting started. And everyone's in the same boat. Westwood's doing their vote tonight. They did not release to the public. Millis is doing theirs. I'm not sure if they released theirs. Ashland's not releasing theirs. Walpole voted. They did not release theirs until after. Because, you know, this is, school committee is a business meeting that happens to be public. Like, this is a business meeting and you guys are elected to do this business and that's why we're here. And we did, we did surveys, we did all that information. At some point, we have to make a decision based on what the plan is, which you guys have all had a copy of. And that's what you're elected to do. So I think that's, I know people are frustrated because they don't, they feel like they don't have a, a voice in this because they don't know, but that's kind of not the way the process works right now.
It's also such a multi-dimensional plan. There are so many specialized parts about running a school.
For sure.
About bringing kids in, about pedagogy, about the epidemiology, that there isn't really ones, one piece of the decision that doesn't affect every other single part of it. So and I think I, I said this to a parent because I certainly know that people have had, have been contacting us for quite some time about their concerns. And I think we've tried to pass them on that this is not a decision about, nobody wants to make this decision. And in, in general, I can pretty much assume that 50% of the people would be very unhappy with what any one of us will decide. And almost 100% of the people will be unhappy with something at some point in the next year. And that is because this is not normal and this is not school and this is not where we ever expected to be. And we would not be having this conversation at all if, if there was not a crisis in the world. So to, to kind of put it out there and have all these kind of like very specific questions around extremely large, broad questions for an entire population only muddies the most important question, which is what is safest? While at the same time being able to deliver the best education we can to kids, which is our base purpose. So it is hard. I get it. I look at this plan too, and I think, wow, there's a lot of stuff here that personally is going to be incredibly difficult. And I feel that way for many other people, but we wouldn't be doing this if we didn't absolutely have to. And I don't think any of us ever expected to be here. So it's frustrating. And keep on telling us about how frustrated you are because I think sometimes it's helpful to have that knowledge so that we can help and understand. You know, don't stop communicating with us or feeling as though we don't care.
So I will say that there's lots of questions we need to get through also. And I'll let people know that when they see the plan, they will have a lot of ideas of what the hybrid would look like with the sample schedules. So I'll answer a lot of these questions, but I think we should commence with the questions before tops 100.
All right. So why are students in cohort D full-time remote not included in the Wednesday remote time with the rest of their class?
Because they're not going to be part of their class. They're going to be part of the Medfield Virtual Academy.
Beautiful.
Right. So that is an outside program in which there will be a, a anchor teacher.
If you choose that, you're not part of a class. You're part of that, the Medfield Academy, which is a different group of kids. So.
So being a part of, that was part of the work that I was doing with the department that is designed to be a school within a school. So you would look at it as a K-12 program that's part of mental public schools, Medfield's public school teachers and whatnot, still classmates, but they're going to be operating in a subset, independent program.
Great. Brian Hearn, Marsden keeps saying, when is it safe? What is the benchmark for determining when is it safe? I dare say it's pretty safe now if you actually look at the numbers.
I think I mentioned that there's going to be a metric looking at a statewide, county-wide, local metric that we're looking at.
Yeah.
States coming up with that.
Alrighty, this is from Sue. I had the same question as that person. Oh, okay, sorry, Sue. Matthew Newberg, what is the deadline to sign up for cohort D?
There'll be more information coming out in the next two weeks on that.
Okay. Sarah Becker, is the bus capacity model taking into account, oh, it's, taking into account three feet radius separation, six feet radius separation? Or something else? Also, I saw the second survey that came out that said parent, that said parents that said no to busing will not have the bus available during the school year. Can you speak to that? As a taxpayer, I certainly don't want to spend unneeded money on school buses that will not be used. But at the same time, I may not want to use the bus in the fall, but may want to use it in the spring. Also, the email survey won't have 100% response rate. So for those who don't respond, will they default to yes to use the buses?
There'll be another, Sarah, there'll be another email that goes out with an additional survey. We were just trying to get, again, I, I just have to emphasize, I did get feedback from a couple of folks about the surveys. The surveys are designed for us, like the data that we need. So it might've been questions that you, you might've been wanting other questions, but the surveys are for us to get the data that we needed at that time. And the data we needed at that time was around folks that were really thinking about riding the bus because that first survey in July, which I didn't add on the presentation around busing, 25% of people said yes to busing. When we did it in August, that went up to 51%. So that's a huge difference for our transportation. So we'll do one more where people have to commit 100% what they're going to do. So that, that's, it's a process and it's, you can't have all the answers right away. And that's, we need to do it in a way that, number one, we had to see what the interest was in July, August. We had to find out exactly what people were more interested in. And then as we go to the middle end of August, now we need to have people say, yep, I'm riding the bus or I'm not. And that's where we're, that's kind of what our process and our, what we're doing.
Thank you. Matthew Newberg, will we be able to drop off the kids still if we feel the bus isn't safe?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes. Sarah Becker. It keeps moving on me. Sorry. If two students from the same family sit together, won't that impact every other seat for the row behind in front of the sibling sitting together?
It's still the same number within each bus.
Still 23 capacity or whatever the number is.
Yeah. And so with a kid kind of sitting off by the window and then right next to them.
Yeah.
The other child is on the other.
Yeah, it doesn't impact.
All right. Chris McQ Potts, what are the total number of buses estimated to be needed for each school?
So we have 19 buses in total and now we're working out what we need for each. So we're still working on that.
Based on the data. Yep. Poppy Griffin, who will be teaching the Medfield Virtual Academy? Will they be Medfield teachers?
So it'll be self-paced, but the check-ins and the assistants will be, and the assistants for that program will be Medfield teachers or teacher assistants. Yes.
Okay. Mike Donovan, it was mentioned that the state will be providing guidance data points to determine when in-person learning can take place. If Medfield reaches that data point, whatever it is determined to be, will it be up to a vote to return to in-person or will that be determined by state guidelines itself?
Great question, Mike. So it will, we'll have to play that out a little bit because the governor, if the governor decides that, if he says that if you are at whatever percentage of transmission, which by the way, yes, to Brian Hearn, yes, it is well right now. We'll agree with that.
Yeah.
So if that's from the governor and that's his mandate, then there will not be a vote needed. However, if it's going to be a local decision, like it seems like it's going to be, then it would be a vote of this board to allow us to go back into full.
Okay. This is from Courtney. Are we paying for kindergarten? Great job. I appreciate all your hard work. Thanks.
Yeah, we're still working on that particular piece on kindergarten. We'll have to bring that to the, to this group in the month of August. So we're still working on that.
Okay. So Brian Hearn, wait. So the 10 required training days are not actually training days? Yeah, they are. Right? They're professional development days.
Yes.
Yes.
They could be planning, I guess. I mean, so planning is professional development. It's anonymous.
I think that popped up around the conversation around open house or students visiting the classroom. So.
Okay. Well, we're trying to use them as best for everyone. So.
Okay. Rebecca Johnson, all cohort D questions, how will you assign a teacher, assistant teacher for the virtual only model at Memorial? Will there be opportunities for students to interact in the virtual only model? Are you using an outside program to provide the virtual only curriculum?
Let's see. We're, we're looking, one of the, the biggest things that we have to do in the next few weeks is determine if we have some teachers that, or staff members that aren't coming back to full capacity based on their own situation. So once we get that nailed down, that number, then we'll be looking at who's going to provide services, whether it be in remote or whether it be in the Medfield Virtual Academy. So that, that's still, we're still working on that because we don't have the finalized numbers of staff. So that, that's something we're doing. Yes, for number two. And yes, we're using outside program. We're looking at two right now from the state and we'll, we'll finalize that probably next week.
Sarah Becker, will all classes utilize Zoom if we want our kids to learn at home? I think recording all classes from K to 12 to allow students and parents to be home if they choose is important.
That, that's our goal. Our goal is to get to a point where we can record classes. Yes.
Catherine Thorpe, thank you for all your incredibly hard work.
It's kind of essentially the same question.
Sorry?
I think it's the same.
Question about the hybrid. Will students be working? Okay, yes, that is, sorry. L O D Schiller, thank you for providing the Medfield community with the opportunity to ask questions about this recommended plan tonight. When do parents need to make the final call for which model we want their children, child, children to be part of?
So based on, if there's a, a vote tonight on hybrid, it would be hybrid and then it would be cohort D or the Virtual Academy. So we're going to, we'll get information on that next couple of weeks or so.
Okay. Chris McQ Potts, what is the future of music ensembles? Band and chorus are problematic. Orchestra is possible. Will the high school Blake auditoriums be off limits due to no windows?
Yeah, we're still working on that.
Okay. This is from Dan. Will there be remote only option?
Yes.
Yes. Janelle, isn't the concept of cohort C attending all days defeating the concept of keeping the two groups separate for safety reasons?
That's a good question, Janelle. That's something that we're working on right now to make sure that we can provide cohort C to have limited exposure. So we're, we're looking at that right now. That's one of the, in the weeds things that we're trying to work on.
Clarify because I, I was confused on that. So cohort C, I thought would be its separate cohort going, you know, all four days as opposed to blended with A and then blended with B.
Could be.
Okay. So that, we're still working. Because yeah, I tend to agree with that.
Jeff, I, I kind of got that question too around the idea of the teachers who live in town, whose kids come all four days as well. But that lends into that same issue and would there be any benefit of kind of grouping them if, if it lends to it? I don't know how many people that actually is.
Things that we're definitely looking at. So they, they may stay in their assigned cohort for two days and then be in a different area or a different cohort on the other days. That's one of the things that we're, we don't know the numbers yet. So we don't know how many kids we're going to deal with. So once we, we get that data point next week, then we'll be able to craft that a little, little better.
So many different scenarios to having to deal with. I commend you all.
Indeed. Sarah Becker, thank you so much for all you are doing. There is no perfect answer and please know that the town thanks you for all your thoughtful plan. Thank you. Thank you very much. Megan Johnson, excuse me. At what point will we revisit these plans? Is the decision for the entire 2021 school year?
Yeah, good question, Megan. So that's, you know, that, that's the million dollar question. We have to really see where the data takes us in terms of the virus. So that's, it's going to be something we keep reviewing and reviewing and, and watching the indicators and then it'll go from there. But I mean, this is really for the start of the year and we'll see where we are. I would love to have us all in. Wishful thinking, maybe the magical thinking, all in by the, by the winter, but who knows?
Hope so. Leanne Harvey, then why didn't you release the plan so we could have an informed discussion tonight? I think we talked about that. Yes. Matthew Newberg, do the teachers and administrative roles agree with every, with everything that has been shown so far?
Well, no, you have to negotiate.
Yeah, but we can't really negotiate in public. So I don't know.
Right. All right. Carrie Riggins, you mentioned the desk separators, but in, but in your presentation of the rooms, I don't think they were in the pictures provided. What are they going to look like?
There's one in, there's a picture of one in.
In the document. Okay. Laura, I, I know there was a great teacher representation in the formation of these plans. Can you share the concerns of the teachers' union and the likelihood that they will be able to adequately address these concerns?
Same answer, we can't negotiate in public.
No. Leanne Harvey, um, issue is that we have not received the plan before you are voting. Other towns have released their plans ahead of meetings like this. Not okay.
Yeah, and other towns have, so.
Okay. Brent, thank you so much for the detailed thorough presentation and thank you to the school and district committee who have worked on this. My family and I appreciate your efforts, Dr. Marston. I hope that the school committee sees that and agrees with your recommendations as you and the district clearly have the student's best interest in mind, which is why we pay taxes here. Thank you. Sue, may I ask what science is behind recommendation? The three feet apart is okay in school bus, but when in classrooms, they are only six feet apart? Will, will, um, will bus windows be down to improve air ventilation or something? Thanks.
We're requiring that the bus windows open the entire town.
I saw that, yeah. Jennifer Hearn, what does an actual day in the life of a student look like if they are learning virtually? Please provide a detailed daily breakdown of K five. Is, is that, is it all review? What is the amount of teacher engagement on days outside of the classroom, et cetera?
I think that's detailed in the plan.
Pretty detailed in the plan, yeah.
Carrie, um, so will cohorts A and B in the hybrid plan be alternate, alternating weeks? If not, is it possible for a child in cohort B to switch to cohort A due to parents' work schedule?
Um, first question is no, and the second question is not at this time. We're not entertaining that yet, but we're still putting the cohorts together.
Okay. Sarah Becker, could you explain what will happen if when a student or teacher comes down with COVID? Will we shut down? This will be helpful for planning. My friends in Westwood are begging for a full-time back-to-school model, but believe in their hearts that this will only be for four weeks until people start getting sick. What is the plan for Medfield? There's a document for that, correct? Okay. Jules Hoffman, how can parents get more information about Medfield Virtual Academy? At the middle school level, will there be live learning, different teachers for different subjects and live teacher interaction with opportunities for small group learning? Just hoping there will be a chance for students to connect with, with their online teachers. Also, will there be a Medfield teacher or TA assigned to each grade at this point of contact? Or one teacher for all students for cohort D?
Okay, what about there, Jules? Um, I would say that the plan, we, we described what Medfield Virtual Academy is. Uh, we'll have more details, as I said, in the next couple of weeks on that. There will be a teacher assigned to, I assume, groups of students. It all really depends on how many kids we have as a part of it. So we'll allocate staff as we can on that and, um, there will be definitely some interaction, but a lot of it is self-paced and computer-based program.
All right. This is from David Rigerio, how are specials going to be delivered at Memorial, Wheelock and Dale?
Yeah, David, that's, that's something that we're, we're working on. I know that Missy will be talking to you about that.
Janelle, and thank you guys for all your hard work. You are all doing an amazing job. Such a challenging position for all of you on this committee. Thank you, Janelle.
Always positive, Janelle.
Karen Peters, just to clarify, there is no option to run an in-person model as you cannot have all students back six feet apart, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Matthew Newberg, will the replacement of the air filters in the school, are the air, are the air handlers going to be upgraded to MERV thirteen standards as well?
Well, Matthew, our consultants that we're working for say that, working for us and have looked at the system, feel like they can handle the MERV thirteen, that's on the issue.
Okay. Mr. R, I forgot to clarify, in a hybrid model, and you just said heap game, so can do, okay. Jules, the question about Medfield Virtual Academy Cohort D is from Jules Hoffman. Thank you, Jules. Um, okay, so hi, sorry, Mike Cass, are you saying we need to vote tonight deciding on whether our kids will need to be homeschooled or not? Just confirming, because if we decide tonight, we have to stay with this decision, correct? They do not have to vote tonight to be homeschooled, no.
And there's a difference between homeschool and remote learning.
Yes.
Homeschool is a private contract essentially, which Dr. Marston approves that you can kind of remove your child from the district. And that actually does have long-term financial implications for the district as well. Not for this year, but for next year. So, um, but I think, you know, I'm sure Dr. Marston or one of your building principals would be very happy to kind of clarify for you specifically the difference between remote learning and homeschooling.
Great. Heidi Feldman, a very nuanced question. How will the schedule adjust for Group A with the Monday holidays? Is there an, an, an in-person makeup plan to go to get the in-person teaching hours? We answered that, it comes out in the wash. If we keep a child home for, uh, for symptoms, do they have access to remote learning that day?
That's a good question. We're working on that.
Okay. Hamwell, can you please clarify what your ideal vision is for the three days of remote learning? How will there be any live on, um, how will there be any live online teaching if teachers, teachers are teaching opposite cohort for two days?
Well, we may have other staff working with them on those other days. Again, that's, that's what we're working on right now as far as, um, how many staff members we're gonna have available to do that. But that's, that's one model that we can look at. Um, live streaming is also another model. Recording, so all those are, these we're looking at.
Great.
They're all in the plan.
Okay. Kim Price, um, will Medfield teachers be teaching the Medfield Virtual Academy?
Yes, Kim.
Yes. Carrie, I am still confused on how the hybrid plan will work. Are teachers going to be teaching cohorts A and B the same curriculum twice in the same week?
That could happen. That could be a way that, I mean, if, if, if we're not live streaming classes, yeah, sure, that might happen.
Okay. All to be negotiated. Kristi Nave, is there a plan to also sanitize the out, outdoor recess equipment at the elementary level?
Yeah, good question. That's something that, there's guidelines around that and we're, we're looking into, um, whether or not that, number one, we're gonna allow kids to use the, the equipment, and number two, whether or not, um, that is needed. We think it might be needed, so, uh, we're looking at it.
Okay. Sarah Becker, when would we find out what cohort our children are in? For example, I have a middle schooler and a Wheelock child and my husband is a teacher who will, who will current state be live in school on Thursday, Friday. Planning for our children to be home, which days for which kids is important to ensure we have resources available for them to remotely learn? Okay. Um, but we do know what cohort the children will be based on the, your last name.
A to K and L to Z, is that what it is?
Correct. A to K, L to Z, yes. Yeah. Um, Kristen Martin, how does the impact, um, how does this impact the integrated preschool?
So we have a, a part of the plan around any degree of preschool. Certainly, that's, uh, something that we're working on and Missy, Missy and I are, are gonna have a meeting on next week about that, because that's a little more problematic because of the different models already imposed in the preschool. So we're, we're gonna try to nail that down by then next week. Additional guidance, by the way, coming from the state on, on preschools.
Okay. Elan Parag, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, but will parents get to view the Virtual Academy before deciding?
We'll send information out before, yes.
Beautiful. Um, Andrea Lichtenstein, there are rumors that the MTA is putting pressure on districts to start full remote. If that is the case, what is the likelihood that Medfield, with near zero confirmed cases for the last few months, will actually start hybrid? We can't answer that.
We can't discuss.
Sorry, Andrea. What is the, um, anonymous, okay, Brian Rice, in addition to the children of teachers, will the children of parents who are critical medical providers or other essential workers also have the opportunity to attend in person for days? Brian Hearn, what is the plan for refunding full-day kindergarten tuition? What is the plan for refunding?
For this past school year? It must be for this past school year, I'm assuming.
Yeah, we haven't paid for the up.
Yeah, um, yeah, we're, again, Brian, I, I, you know, we're looking at, at what that could, that could mean for us. It's, it's on the agenda. We're still, we've gotten a few emails about it, so it's definitely on the agenda.
Okay. Uh, Ryan Landers, oh, my, my name is Kate Landers. I joined late. Will parents have option to have their children do full-time remote distance learning? If so, will it be with their peers and taught by a Medfield teacher?
Yes.
Okay. Chris McQ Potts, when did school committee and Board of Health members get access to the plan? There is no reason to be frustrated at people who want a chance to ask informed questions. Okay. Renee, under the possible full-remote survey, how would teachers be able to meet expectations if their kids are also home? This is, this has addressed for hybrid model with the kids going to school all days.
I'm just reading it again.
Yes, so am I.
I'm not clear what that means.
I'm, I'm afraid I don't either. Anyone else? No? Um, Kathy Kumar, how can we access the plan?
Good news is only ninety-three more questions.
Right. That's okay.
It's okay.
That's okay. Um, Kathy Kumar, um, how can we access the plan to review it? Sorry if this was mentioned in the beginning. Will there be a link to it on the Medfield website? And this plan is different from the DESI plan published June twenty-fifth and July twenty-fourth. So tonight it'll be posted, yeah.
And is, it's essentially the DESI reports on the twenty-fifth and July twenty-fourth were guidance.
Correct.
We need to then make that work for our town, our school system. So it's not like DESI came and said, this is it.
We had to do all three plans to, you know, put something together for all three plans.
Right.
That's what we did in this particular.
This is Josh Stefanik, um, who is teaching remotely if teachers are teaching the other fifty percent, um, the other two days? Is there any consideration for having K and one in-person for days like the other surrounding towns are considering? Are the remote days hours required? How will this work with two working parents? And how will this add up to a hundred seventy days of school?
Let's take them one by one.
Yeah.
There's three separate questions. So the, the teaching remotely, I think we went through that a little bit in the beginning, um, on the, I guess it's on the hybrid. And as we were talking, what we gave an example, what that would look like. So it could be synchronous, uh, which is live teaching, could be asynchronous. It could be live streaming. It could be work that kids are, are working on independently. So all those different things can happen. I think when you look at a live stream model here, there's no issue around any of that because you can continue to keep going on the curriculum without having to reteach an A and a B cohort. So, um, or if you record lessons, you can do it that way as well. So those are, you know, certainly things that we're looking at. I just lost the rest of this question.
Yeah, it keeps moving. Is there consideration for having K and one in-person for days like other surrounding towns are considering?
Yeah, e- everyone's considering. I'm not sure it's gonna actually happen. So I, I don't, you know, I think, um, I'd be shocked if people were able to pull it off. It's, it's more of a space issue for us, uh, but I know that that was a goal for a couple of towns in the area. I'm not sure they're actually gonna get there.
Okay. So, and the, their last part of the question, are the remote days hours required? How will this work with two working parents?
So the state, uh, reduced the number of hours required. We usually do nine ninety, um, at the high school, middle school level and nine hundred, the elementary, they reduce those because of the one seventy. It'll, it'll equal one seventy.
Okay. Louise, while teachers are busy teaching half the kids cohort A in person, who will be available to assist the other kids cohort B while they are home working remotely?
So that would be staff that, um, is, is unable to work in person. So we're, and again, we don't know the numbers yet because we're, we're waiting on that's all next week to get that information.
Also for cohort D, will kids be grouped into a classroom? Will they be assigned one teacher that works with them all year so they can build rapport? And will it be a Medfield school teacher? I think we said.
So we, we've answered the school teacher one before, yes. Absolutely be a Medfield, either school teacher or assistant. And, um, it all, it all depends on the numbers. If we have five kids, it's gonna look a little bit different than we have two hundred kids. So we have to just get that enrollment and, and see how that shows up.
And then her last part of the question for middle school, schoolers in cohort D, will they have a teacher for each subject or just one teacher to oversee all their subjects?
I just, I wanna clarify it again, um, on that. So the cohort D, the Virtual Academy, is, um, a self-paced, computer-based curriculum. So it's not, you're not gonna be in a remote si- setting with a teacher teaching you class the whole time. It's gonna be a self-paced, it's going to be, um, computer-based and, uh, there'll be a teacher working and facilitating and helping out, but not all the time. So I just wanna clarify that again.
I think it, it's not necessarily one size fits all, though. In other words, if you're middle school or high school, you may, you still may have different choices as to your curriculum.
Right, it's grade level. It's based on grade level, yeah.
And then, so that leads into the next question there. Y- you're not interacting with other students. This is just your own, um, your own program.
Yeah, but I think we, we're gonna try to encourage ways for kids to interact in, within that academy. It's not gonna be just kids working alone all the time.
Okay.
We're gonna try to group them so that there's some interaction. Like, for instance, we're, we're seeing in some plans, you know, virtual lunches, where, you know, every day at twelve o'clock, the kids in, in the Virtual Academy get together, have lunch on Zoom, like things like that, that we'll, we'll put that to connect, connect kids together.
Great. Um, Leanne Bravo, what is the procedure if a student or teacher has symptoms while at school? Will school be immediately closed? Will that person need to go into quarantine? Will the student be released to the parent? That's in that document you were referencing. Um, Sue, anon, hi, anonymous attendee six twenty-nine, I had the same question, it was skipped. Um, question, who is teaching remotely if teachers are teaching? Okay, we answered that.
We answered that one, yeah.
Sorry. Um, Carrie, I just wanna thank all of you for your hard work on this. Um, I can only imagine how much time and countless hours you have spent on this. Your efforts are greatly appreciated. I know the kids and staff's safety is of the, your utmost concern. Absolutely. Jennifer Hearn, do you have a curriculum mapper or prepackaged CMS, LMS for teachers to populate and streamline communication starting the first day of school? When I asked if there was a line item in the budget for this in June, the answer was no. Have things changed? If so, how close are you to buying one?
So Jennifer, we're using, um, a virtual notebook model on Google Classroom that was extremely successful last year and we're doing that K to twelve. So the LMS piece will be done, uh, for cohort D.
Okay.
Can you, uh, clarify LMS and CMS for the rest of us? I mean, I, I know essentially what they're talking about, but yeah.
I'm sorry, repeat that, please?
Curriculum management or learning management systems.
Beautiful, thank you.
Um, Jenny, some communities have states, um, have states that the bus ride will take, oh dear, I'm losing it, will take longer even with less kids. Will the same be true for Medfield?
Michael, what's your best guess on that one?
Maybe.
We don't think so right now, but we're, we're waiting for the official numbers before we can really tell you what that would look like.
Okay, um, Megan Johnson, could Dr. Marston get closer to the mic, please? A little hard to hear.
Owen just told me.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Um, Maria Beck, or Marla, sorry. On the days that are remote, will the assignments be the same for all teachers in that particular grade? That way, parents could buddy up their children to help one another?
Um, it depends on what grade. If we're talking about elementary, that's, excuse me, definitely something that we're looking at because that consistency works so well, um, in the spring. So it, it really depends on the grade, but that's, you know, that was part, part of our guiding principles in this whole plan is, is making sure that kids have consistent experiences across various levels.
Um, I think we answered this question, but I will read it, Rebecca Johnson. In what ways will students be able to interact with, within cohort D? You had mentioned the lunches, various things. Um, Ms. Holman, as in if a teacher were assigned and not coming back, will we know that before we have to commit?
Kelly Wasaki has a question too. Teacher assigned not coming back, will we know that we'll, we have to commit? Uh, we're gonna do the best we can around that. We, we, again, once I get that information, uh, we'll see what the numbers are. It could be five teachers, it could be ten, it could be one. We just don't know yet. So, uh, we have a sense of what it could be, but once we get that information and, and remember, we don't just have classroom teachers, we have lots of professional staff in our district. So it may not be a classroom teacher I'm talking about, that may be a more remote. It, it could be a reading specialist or it could be someone else. So, um, it all depends on what, what information we get.
Okay. Kelly Wasaki, regarding going back to school, if transmission rates meet a determined level, are there negotiations needed with the teachers' unions? Or would that not be needed in the event school committee voted to return to completely in-person learning?
Uh, because this is Massachusetts and chapter one fifty E is gonna be negotiated.
Okay.
That is a change in working condition.
That is a change in working conditions.
Kristen Parton, based on work schedules, is there any flexibility with swapping kids from Thursday, Friday to Monday, Tuesday?
Yeah, not at this time. We're not entertaining that. I mean, I'm not saying no, but I'm just saying not at this time.
Yeah. Claire Mian, could you please clarify what would happen on remote learning days for the hybrid model? Would there be any contact with teachers? Would learning be student-driven videos, worksheets? And would this vary by school?
Yes, Claire. So it would be a combination or one of synchronous, live teaching it could be, or contact. It could be asynchronous, whether it would be a video or it could be student-driven. So it really depends on the grade level, the course, all of that. And then if we have additional staff that will be working remote, they will be assigned to, to check in with certain. Our goal is to have department, a teacher from every department for the secondary and one person to look at a couple of grade levels in the elementary that'd be responsible for checking in with kids on remote days. So that's, that's what our vision is. It's whether or not we have the staffing to do that. So we need to work through that a little bit.
Okay. From Kelly, if you choose cohort D and the whole district goes remote, are you still in, in the virtual academy? Does this change if the change to remote happen, happens before or during the school year?
It really depends on when that change happens with the district. So if, if it's a quick change, then we probably need some lead time to have someone go back into a cohort A or B or back into remote and leave, and leave D. But we'd like, we'd like to have a commitment for people to, to stay as long as we're in this process, you know? But there needs to be kind of benchmarks as we go along. So it can't be, and I think I said this earlier, it can't be in a situation where on Monday, you decide, you know what? I want my kid to be in hybrid and you've been in the learning academy, virtual academy. You gotta, we gotta have some lead time on that, so.
There. Kristen Parton, will kids generally stick with the same teacher they've been assigned as much as possible?
That depends on what grade levels. If it's elementary, yes. If it's middle school, it's, it's within the cluster. And if it's high school, we're doing all we can to keep grade levels together.
Okay. Michelle Bonnet, when will we know which cohort our child is planning for purposes? Will only children or children without siblings in school system possibly be flexed to a different cohort for number of purposes?
Yeah, so we're gonna get on that in the next couple of weeks. I think if you wanna look at the way we've broken them down alphabetically, that'll kind of give you a sense of where your child may be. But all those definite, the principles are working on those cohorts right now.
Is there a plan to also sanitize the outdoor? We, we answered that. Julia, once Student Services decides who qualifies for Group C, when will parents find out if their child qualifies?
Yeah.
As soon as we have the numbers, we'll be contacting families individually, so you know exactly what the expectations are. As we said, we wanted to wait for the vote so we know what model the district is moving forward with. And then we can look at the exact numbers of people and contacting everyone as soon as possible.
Kristen Parton, will the kids have any time aside from recess where they get to interact with each other?
Yeah, there'll be scheduled mass breaks throughout the day too. We hopefully have those outside if we can, so that there'll be a time to interact as much as possible.
Holly Rand, has there been any consideration given to frontline working families that are unable to work from home to allow students to go in the same capacity as has been suggested for teachers' children? We answered that. Not at this time. Sorry. Pamela Bates, have you considered allowing a cohort D that's just not, that's not just virtual academy but keeps kids in their assigned class? For example, my child is in cohort A, but I'm not comfortable sending in person at all until a vaccine is available. Would you consider my child to be in A on Wednesdays? Do the normal Tuesday, Friday online work with cohort A and plug into self-study with D on Monday and Tuesday? Just a thought for growing number of families not comfortable sending in person.
Yeah, thanks Pamela. I think, you know, one of the things that we've tried to commit to is not having our teachers in both worlds. So if you have someone that is committed to doing virtual in the academy, we need to have a certain amount of teachers working with them and staff working with them. If you do what you say, they would bounce out of the virtual academy, back into the A, B cohort, and then back into the virtual academy. And that's, it's really difficult for people to manage.
Dr. Marsden, if you can talk closer to your mic.
Oh, really?
There's another call.
Oh, sorry.
Please, thank you. Leanne Harvey, thank you for clarifying. Why do we, did we not receive the plan ahead of time? Thanks for all your hard work on this. We are in unprecedented times and we appreciate all of your work this summer. I think we explained why we did not release this earlier.
No, she was thanking us for that.
Oh, okay.
Not asking us.
Okay, sorry.
So thanks, Leanne.
Excuse me. Yes, thank you. All right, now.
It's a little hard to read these sometimes just because they skip.
It is, and it keeps moving. Now I lost where I am.
Kristin Higgins, Christine Higgins.
Christine.
Seven thirteen PM.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Leo. Christine Higgins, are, are any other factors being used when determining what cohort your child might be in other than last name? For instance, if three children are on the same non-school-related group or activity and are in the same class, are you going to try and keep those kids together? Or is the last name the only factor?
Yeah, the last name's the only factor right now.
Yeah. Okay. Catherine Thorpe, my question in regard to what remote days will look like is different than I believe the previous question that was asking about full-remote cameras in, in classrooms. My question is asking, what are kids doing on remote days? Will they be connected to classrooms via Zoom? Thank you again.
Okay, I mean, I think we've talked a little bit about the different asynchronous, synchronous in working on directed, you know, student-directed work. I mean, if, if they're in the classroom on a remote, if they're on a remote day and there's a lesson going on in their classroom that's being livestreamed, then they can participate in it that way or watch it that way. So that was, I think what we're trying to get at.
Jeff, and I, this comes up a lot and I was even gonna go on through this. Without getting into the, that which we can't discuss with the union, the concept of live streaming would, in theory, if, if we could pull it off, would give you consistency. You're in the class live Monday and Tuesday, Thursday and Fri, or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you're with your same classmates through live streaming. Right? Like, in, in some cases at least, I think that seems at least, again, consistent, some level of structure.
Right.
I guess a part of that is what are the factors that make live streaming difficult? I, I can guess several of them, but that, that, you know, what are the things outside of union-oriented issues that might be there?
I'm not sure they're ready there at that point. I mean, I, I mean, that's the biggest thing.
So, so things like camera, microphones, et cetera, we can manage.
Not issues.
High level, we can manage. They come up over, and that's where, that's where I was gonna ask as well. It creates a little bit more continuity.
Yep.
For sure. LOD, will there be lunch options via the cafeteria? Or will children have to bring their own lunch with the in-person or hybrid model?
Yes, cafeteria will be open.
Ryan Landers, can any parent who wants their chill, child, needs their child in full-time, remote-distance learning now sounds like it's called Cohort D? Automatically get to do so, so we can sleep tonight? Meaning don't have to apply or get approval for it? Also, you confirmed it will be run by Medfield teachers for this Medfield Academy, but will not be the same curriculum as what's taught in schools in the hybrid model? Will curriculum allow them to progress to the next grade like peers in hybrid?
Yes, Ryan, absolutely.
I'll also say that it was also designed to be customized by teachers if they don't feel it was up to the caliber that Medfield might expect. And so it is able to be adjusted as seen fit.
Good.
Jessica May, when do you expect to complete the negotiation with the teachers' union?
I, I put in the letter, in the message from the superintendent, the plan that my hope is to have that done by September first. So that's our goal. I think everyone's, everyone wants that done, so that's our goal.
Blake, how will it work with afternoon school programs, K-five, like MAP and Kidsborough? Will the hybrid plan, kids are grouped during the day and then could be in new groups in afternoons? Have there been, have there been discussions about this yet?
So is that, I guess the question is after-school programs, having kids come in?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think we're, we're really, we're working closely with, with MAP in terms of trying to get them, probably not as quickly as they'd like, but get, get a sense of whether they can use our spaces after school. And we have to look at the cleaning schedule and see if that can work. But as far as the, the additional after-school programming and mixing of cohorts, we don't have any control over that.
So Jeff, but building on MAP, because I've heard this question a couple of times. Is it feasible that MAP could offer on, for cohort B on Monday, Tuesday, and cohort A on Thursday and Friday? Or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for that matter, to services during the day to provide guide-on-the-side services for parents?
I mean, I don't, I don't have anything jurisdictional over MAP. I would think they could. I'm sure they want to, but I don't know. Yeah.
I was just wondering if that was an option.
Unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, MAP's waiting for us. They were, you know, to do their programming, so we're kind of stalling them a little bit because we're trying to figure out if we can get the cleaning done in time for kids to come in. So, and to use our facilities after school because they use a lot of our facilities, our gyms, our classrooms and all that. So we're trying to figure out a way that we can accommodate them because we understand they're a really important part of our community and important part for our kids. So we, but they're, yeah, they're waiting, they probably have those plans in place, but they're waiting for us right now.
Yeah, I could see that playing a major role in easing some of the stress, you know, for those off days for families with the people.
No doubt.
Yeah. All right. LOD, if a, if a child is in cohort D at the beginning of the school year and parents want to switch to cohort A in October or November, will that be possible at that time?
Yeah, I think we'd just be some lead time. We'll have to work on that.
All right. Sophia, thanks for your hard work. If we are doing a hybrid and my child has to quarantine because of symptoms himself or someone in the house having symptoms, do they move to virtual academy for the time period he has to stay home or somehow be provided with regular classroom work?
So we are responsible and we're required to provide services and education when someone or a student is quarantined because of this. So I think we're gonna look at doing the best we can, like if someone was out, you know, out that, out sick that day, we would treat it that way, although there is an opportunity, if it's a longer term, to look at the virtual academy. But either way, we'll provide instructional learning for those students that are quarantined.
This is actually from Megan. Is it possible to stagger mandatory online learning times between schools so that families have access to appropriate bandwidth with parents working from home and multiple children learning from home?
I mean, that is not from me, by the way. I don't know what, Megan.
Oh, it's not, it's not that, Megan?
No. Just confirm.
Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah, I think that's definitely a consideration that we tried to stagger the times of the schools because of that. But that's something that we're looking at. But I, I understand that's definitely an issue with folks working at home and having enough bandwidth. That's something we've heard, heard a few times. So we're trying to, trying to do that. We're gonna make it as structured as we can, and we're gonna have to try to, folks are gonna have to try to work around that. But that's, we know that's an issue for families.
Okay. Chris McHugh Potts, what are the reasons for band and chorus ensembles to still be in progress? When superintendents were told more than a week, a week ago by DESI, they cannot happen. One, they will need to be fully remote when can't be outdoors. Okay. Terry, I know not the most important, but will the Board of Health allow children to buy lunch from the cafeteria?
That's my understanding, yes.
Dan, will students in the virtual academy be evaluated in the same way as those in hybrid? Will they also have access to specials?
So evaluation piece, and I think one of the things that we've talked about and we put that in the plan as well is that we, we all know that it was a little different in terms of assessments in, in grading in the springtime. And that was really driven by the state. We are, we are going back to the assessments and the grading procedures that we do in our normal schools. So that's what we're, we're doing in the, in the fall. As far as the virtual academy, that's something that we're gonna, part of having a virtual academy is the teachers that'll be working in that have a substantial amount of training and the assessment is going to be part of that. So once we, we see what that training is and what the assessment that's gonna be prescribed by those online programs, we could answer that question better. We just, by the way, just got it yesterday from the state, the online LMS. So we haven't, you know, Leo wasn't working hard enough on it, so it took, it took a little, it took a little time.
Throw him under the bus.
So, yeah, that, that's why, that's why there's a lot of questions about the virtual academy. And I'm saying that we're looking at it, assuming in a couple of weeks. We literally just got it yesterday, so.
This is from Holly Shaughnessy, will Blake students travel from class to class in small cohorts?
So we're trying to keep the, the clusters together and do one way, you know, in the hallways and manage the, the bell schedule and the time, so there's not a lot of kids in. So yes, there will, there will be some movement at Blake.
Great. Megan Johnson, thank you for all your efforts. I love the idea of live streaming so children can learn at the same time, whether in classroom or at home. This is from Terry. What is the plan for high school in regards to leveled classes and how to keep kids together when they all have different classes?
Yeah, I think that's the challenge that every high school in the state has right now. We're still gonna have our same class offerings where we're looking at possibly a reduction in some of the electives that we have at the high school, but our core classes, we're still doing, still doing the levels.
Great. Nancy, will children in the middle school and high school change classrooms throughout the day or stay in the same classroom for most of all the day? Change.
Yeah.
Haley, Karen, will there be any before-school programming? How does this affect MAP and the other after-school programming? We just answered that. Kristen Martin, are families eligible for cohort D if only one parent is a teacher?
Actually, can we go back to that? Because I think that's, there's a little bit of a difference in that question. Before-school programming is generally run by the school. So for those kids who might ordinarily show up at seven AM.
Oh, right.
For, for preschool care, you know, before-school care.
Right.
What are our thoughts around that?
Yeah, as of right now, we're not looking at that program, but we are trying to fit that in.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure that we got that.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you. Heidi, with the cohort split of AK and Z, how will that work if the class is not evenly split by last name?
So actually, we're looking at only children, to be honest with you, to offset that. So if we have a situation where, you know, we have an imbalance in a particular grade level or, you really can't hear me?
Yeah, but people keep commenting saying they.
Particular grade level, that's because I'm looking at you. I'm used to you guys all the time. Particular grade level or classroom, then we're looking to see if we can move students that are only children into some of those. We're looking at that right now to see if that helps out. But it may not, it may not make it, it's not gonna be fifty percent even, that's for sure. But we're, this is, this split we've looked at is the best we can, the closest we can get to the fifty percent.
Okay, cool. Yeah, just try maybe, stick your face in it. CW, oh, Chris, which Chris. You mentioned that students will not be permitted to jump between cohorts. But if the district is forced into a fully remote model, will students in cohort D be permitted to re-enter the remote learning system that cohorts A, B, and C will be a part of? Or does committing to cohort D mean that students will be part of the Medfield Virtual Academy for the full year? We spoke about that.
We did, yeah.
It just needs some time.
Yes, we need time to do that transition.
Again, another one, Dr. Marsden's response to my question is not audible.
I don't know what is, which one was this?
That one was, in addition to the children of teachers, will the children of parents who are critical medical providers or other essential workers also have the opportunity to attend in person four days?
Okay, the answer to that was not at this time. We're not.
Chris, Superintendent Marsden, this is important to understand your values as you lead Medfield schools. Please clarify your statement that all survey results were the same across state justifying the need for Massachusetts DESI to make decisions versus locally. Do you believe the students in low-income, underserved communities have the same educational advantages as Medfield? That Massachusetts DESI decisions are one-size-fits-all? What are your personal goals with regard to closing gaps in Medfield during the pandemic?
Next question.
And I think it's actually, we, the report actually talks about that as well.
It does.
There's, there's great effort there.
It's either Melanie or Catherine.
I guess Melanie.
Melanie Winfrey, thank you. I understand that separating cohorts alphabetically but by last name is easier, but why wouldn't preferences be taken to see if it balanced itself out to allow for input that all, that will work best for families?
Yeah, there was no way if we asked for people to choose what cohort, there's no way we could get it. I mean, there's no way we could manage that. It'd be impossible.
We do have 2,600 kids and we're really just trying to get the best service to as many of them as we possibly can.
Catherine Thorpe, again, thank you for all you were doing. I know so many things still need to work through. Can we assume that how kids will learn on remote days via Zoom cameras will be worked through by, by August 10th? Knowing how remote days will work will be a critical part of a family's decision to send their kids in a hybrid model.
It's, it's already worked out in the plan, Catherine. It's there. So when you get that link tonight, you'll be able to look at it.
Okay, this is from Trish. Thank you for all your hard work and careful consideration of all options. There are no good choices, but I appreciate the process thus far. No need to take time to read this aloud.
Always leave with the headline, Trish.
We need good news once in a while.
Thank you, Trish. I'm hap, I was happy to read that. Laura, will kindergarten start on 9/16 as well? They typically start a few days later. And will kindergarten screening still occur in person? Thank you.
Yeah, Missy's working on that right now, so we'll get, you'll get a notice on that.
This is from David Whelan. Will there be software purchased in order to standardize online teaching and for use if and when things go all remote?
So we're using Google Classroom as our platform, grades two through 12.
Jules, another Cohort D question. So if students start in Cohort D.
You know, Anna Mae, I think we've actually answered this one and it, because it's about going back in.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, Jules.
My eyeballs can't go that fast.
I hear you.
Renee, sorry, my question is with regards to potential full remote model. It was stated that it was important to support our teachers by allowing their kids to attend all four days in person in the hybrid model. In a full remote model, the teachers may also have their kids at home. I am concerned about the ability to meet the outlined expectations for full remote. I think the expectation is correct, but I am concerned based on what happened in the spring. Kristen, are you exploring the concept of a heat day switched to remote? Should buildings exceed a certain temperature inside due to the difficulty of wearing masks in extreme heat? Also, the presentation stated everyone was, must wear a mask on, on the bus. Yet there are medical expectations, exceptions, excuse me, for in school. Could you clarify why the different guidance?
Yeah, that's the, the guidance we got from the state that everyone need to have one on, on the bus. So I think that's, yeah, I think that's, you know, we'd have to look at it an individual basis. If there's a medical exception on, on the bus, we'd have to take a look at that individually. As far as the heat days, I think that's something we have to consider. There's no doubt. I know that we've been talking about that as superintendents, that that might be something we consider based on, I mean, that's another one of the good reasons why, or good things for starting a little bit later in September. Typically, we get those hot days in the beginning of September. Of course, I said that, now I just jinxed us. But I think that's, you know, that's something that, you know, we've talked about that in the new building project too, is, is trying to make sure that we have great air conditioning and ventilation in that project because we used to have three or four hot days in a school year and now we have, you know, three or four weeks of it. So definitely a consideration that we're looking into.
Kristen Martin, I meant Cohort C, families where one parent is a teacher. I don't even remember that question, but we can come back to that.
Yeah, I think I do remember it and my understanding, Kristen, oh, I see.
Yeah, it's still yes, Kristen.
It's still yes. You're good.
Sorry. Kate, it sounds as though the teachers that were assigned to my children at the end of the school year will not necessarily be their teacher in the hybrid model. Is that so?
I think the only way that is so, Kate, is if your, your child was assigned to a teacher that may not be able to medically come back in this situation.
But otherwise, we intend to, as much as possible.
That's the intention, yes. Jane Newell, will all classes follow the same curriculum so families can team up on the remote days? Even if they are not in the same class, classes have already been assigned. Will you have to reshuffle to classes to redistribute evenly in Cohorts A and B? Will half-day K exist?
So we're, we're trying not to reshuffle anything for Cohorts A and B. That's our goal, not to move anyone. And yes, half-day will still exist. Half-day K will still exist.
All right, Leanne Bravo, I'm not sure why my question was dismissed, so I will submit it again. What is the procedure if a teach student or teacher has symptoms while at school? Will school be immediately closed? Will that person need to go into quarantine? Will the student be released to the parent?
Leanne, that's all documented in, in our plan. There are 17 pages of Stop-Start Guidance where the link on our plan. So when that gets posted, you can look at it all right there.
Yeah, and I have to tell you, as we're trying to go through these questions, just because of the technology, they jump.
Yes.
As they're dismissed. So sometimes we, we may actually miss, but I think we're all trying to make sure that we go back individually to feed them to you if we, if we miss them. So.
Yes, yes.
We're trying, guys.
Not only a record number of attendees for a school committee meeting at 400 plus, but also a record number of questions.
Right.
Yes. Kristen Martin, sorry for sending incomplete thoughts. I am concerned with Cohort C mixing high needs and teacher students who are not high needs and developing a plan for all these students. Will there be a different plan?
Just to mention that some teachers do have high needs students, but just to, I want to kind of clarify that there's an equity issue there.
Sure.
But.
Yeah, that's something we'll consider.
Yeah.
Ryan Landers, if children are in Medfield Virtual Academy and on a 504 plan, will they continue to have access to their specialists such as virtual check-ins with Kathy Bachhorst, who's amazing as you are teachers, as are your teachers and staff?
Yes.
Great. Rob Goldman, if we start in Cohort D and the COVID-19 numbers dictate full closure based on threshold metrics being breached, will those Cohort D students be able to rejoin the full remote program? Or will they need to stay in Cohort D as part of the Medfield Academy?
Yeah, we talked about that earlier, Rob. I think there's going to be a transition, so we'll have to have a couple of weeks of transition on that. And, and possibly if we're in a full remote, it really depends. If, if we get a full remote by the state and it's going to be for a long period of time, that makes that decision a lot easier. If it's a full remote like we had this past year, which started out as two weeks and it just remains at two or three weeks and we go back, then probably stay in the academy.
Dan T., should this?
Same question.
Oh, okay. Thank you for pre-reading. Missy, thank you for all you have done. My heart breaks for these teachers having to make such difficult decisions, including putting themselves at risk for our children. What is the expectation of the teachers regarding mandating PPE? If students are non-compliant with consistent mask-wearing, what is the protocol regarding behavior? Are they sent home? Are there, are the additional, are there additional staff in classrooms to assure masks and distancing are occurring?
So part of the, the recent MASC policy is that you do treat this like any transgression in the student handbook. That is, is part of, of what that policy is. Whether or not that fits in the Medfield policy, I'm not sure. But that is part of the, the model policy that we'll have to discuss and get in place prior to the start of school.
Regarding the middle school, will advisories be shuffled to place kids who are in accelerated math and/or same foreign language together?
I don't know that, Terry. I'd have to ask Nat on that one. I don't know if, do you guys know that at all? Okay, math, looks like math will be together. Not sure about foreign language, but that's a question we'd have to ask Nat.
Okay, so Jane Newell, if you choose to homeschool, not remote, but completely do home K program on your own with your own, with your own teacher or yourself, and COVID cases fall and things become safer, can you enroll in school mid-year?
Yeah, I think we go full, absolutely.
Now, she's talking about can, if she's homeschooling and she's on a homeschool curriculum approved by you, can she move back into?
Sure. Anyone can do that anytime.
You can do that anytime.
Okay, very good. Rebecca, Westwood Superintendent is recommending K and one in person four days a week as we speak. Jules Hoffman, another more, another more Cohort D question. At the middle school level, in a subject like math, will there be an opportunity for one-to-one extra help?
That's our intent, yes.
Liz, is there an option to purchase a device Chromebook through Medfield? I have heard other towns that have provided them and was curious about this. Thank you.
So if we have any students that need a device, as we did in the spring, we'll provide a device to them.
Melissa Roder, in, in the past, as part of the school supplies list, kids have been asked to bring in Clorox wipes. Will that be asked of them this year? Would a box fan, would you like box fan donations?
Thank you, Melissa. So we, we haven't put together those lists yet for, for materials and wipes. And we need to make sure that we understand the science around box fans before we ask for donations, but thank you.
I, I remind people to please put their names in. If, if I see initials or anonymous, pretty please go back or re-enter with your name. David, Dr. Marsden mentioned medical exemption for masks in his opening remarks. Is there any more information related to what that means?
So my understanding is that if someone has a medical condition, a student has a medical condition and their doctor lets us know through a written note that they cannot wear a mask, that we'd have to look into that. Or if it's something is a part of a disability, then we'd have to look into that.
Casey Hatton, you mentioned Google Classroom is being used for grades two to 12. What is the platform being used for K1?
CSO.
Michelle Bonnet, will students requiring reading or math support get that during their in-person learning or remote time as that usually involves small groups taken from multiple classrooms?
Yeah, I think, Michelle, they would get it both times as much as possible. We try to, in a remote setting, it would look like a breakout room, and then in a live setting, it would be, as it typically would be in a, you know, either a different room or with an assistant.
In the, this is from Jane. In the hybrid model, will all K classes follow the same curriculum? So working families can help each other manage the remote days and team with people in their pod bubble? Or do you have to team up with people in your class?
I'm sorry, I was, I was looking at a different one.
No, that's all right.
Yeah, that's, I mean, the goal, I think, is to be consistent among all, all grade levels, so that especially in the kindergarten. The teachers have been working really well together and collaborating on that curriculum, so we're hoping to deliver very similar curriculum, if not the same.
Sarah, what will happen with preschool? I'm sorry if this has been asked. I joined late.
Sarah, we're, we're waiting for additional guidance on preschool. It's, it's certainly more complex based on the different options that we offer for preschool, but I know Missy will be reaching out to you folks in a couple of weeks.
All right, Chris McHugh Potts, school committee. So you refuse to post the plan in advance of this meeting so people can ask informed questions. Yet you will not answer questions and instead allow Superintendent Marsden to point, to point people to the plan. Do you realize this is frustrating to meeting attendees? What if people continue to have more questions after reviewing the plan? Are you committed to answering them prior to Monday? Well, Chris, I think people have been emailing us personally all week, if not more beyond. So we have been, we have been answering people. Do you guys have anything else to add to that?
I don't think so.
No, okay. Kristen Martin, okay, she says don't have to read. Anonymous, no name, anonymous Jane, if the purpose of chording into groups A and B is to keep the group separate, how can you let teacher, teachers' kids go four days and cross-contaminate? We're working that out. That was asked before. Sarah, will second graders still start foreign language in the fall?
Yes.
And how will cohorts work for AMP kindergarten?
It'll be a little different because the classes are really small to begin with. So there'll be, I'm, I'm not sure we're going to use alphabet, but I need to double-check that with Missy.
Chad Fuller, with us living in such a gnarly time, COVID masks, an ever-growing divide between Americans and families torn apart by political differences, have we thought about adding the beacon of headlights, Paul Walker, to the curriculum? With such crazy times, it seems like we should live a quarter mile at a time. Thank you. I'm going to have to look up the Paul Walker. Okay, Nancy, what sports will be running? Football?
Nancy, we, we are going to get guidance from the state. They're going to make a decision. So the governor is actually in charge of that decision. He got a, he got information from MIAA, but he will be making that decision along with DESI. And we were told by next Wednesday or Thursday, we should know the answer to that.
Tom, explain to me how it makes any sense for you to have a teacher's child to cross from one cohort to another in order for them to go four days. From an, from an infectious disease standpoint, how does this make any sense?
Yeah, I mean, we never, they, they could attend the four days, but we never said they'd be part of that cohort. So they could have, be their own cohort on that other day. So that's, you know, some of the stuff that we're working on. And again, this isn't a Medfield-only thing. This is across all the communities that we're looking at doing this.
Is there any consideration to bring Google Classroom to K1?
I gotta get a drink of water, Christine. Smooth, you can answer.
Yes, actually, we are considering it.
Good on you, Christine.
Yes, hi. Yes, that's something we're definitely going to consider. That's going to be done in consultation with Dr. Billsborough as well as a number of people in the building, including the instructional technologist, technology specialist at that building. So it's, it's possible. Right now, we have CSO. We use that, but it's something that we can definitely consider.
Thank you, Christine. Nicole, what is being done for students in this new environment as far as social emotional adjustments? Most have been home socially distanced since March and now they are going back to school and it looks nothing like it did last year.
Yeah, that's a great point, Nicole. I think that's a big part and that came out in the groups that, both building-based groups and the district group, that, that has to be a focus on all of our buildings and that we know that that's an important piece, especially the fact that maybe some kids haven't been in close contact with some of their friends since the, since March 12th. And we understand that, especially the younger grades. So we are going to be incorporating that through the morning message, the advisories, morning meetings, those kinds of things. So we're going to do our best around that.
Dr. Marsden, I'll say that Anna is really looking forward to having her own desk.
Oh, there you go.
Ms. Holman, sorry, not sure my question went through before. Will we be able to know for sure that our child's teacher is returning before we have to decide hybrid or remote?
Yeah, I think every effort, we'll, we'll do every effort there. We just, again, we have to, I don't know who those people are yet. If I did, I could give you a definite answer, but once I find out who those people are, then, you know, we'll be able to make that determination, but that would be our goal, absolutely.
Michelle Bonnet, sorry, Jeff, to clarify for reading and math support. Since we are trying to keep kids within their own class cohorts, will they mix with other classroom students for specialist support in person?
I, I think we're, we're trying not to do that. I think that's, I, I thank you for the clarification on that. I was thinking you were talking about something else. Yeah, I think our goal is, is to make sure that any of that support happens just with those particular students in that cohort and not mixing cohorts of kids for assistance.
This is from David. Any consideration for division of cohort by location in town versus last name? Wouldn't this help with busing as well as remote learning together?
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. We haven't looked at that yet because we've been looking at doing busing not as, not in the location in town, but as a school, try to keep. but as a school, try to keep those cohorts of kids together and not intermingle cohorts. So for instance, we're trying to do just memorial buses, just wheel lock buses, et cetera. But that's something we can certainly look at and consider.
From Jessica Murray, will students have physical education class in the gym?
That's we're looking at trying to do that outside as much as possible. And physical education is going to look very, very different. And and we're trying to, we're working with our department chair on that to make sure that kids have that experience. But we were going to use the gym for all storage, right? Yeah, so probably not not going to have it in the gym at all. And we're going to have to look at transitioning to maybe some health and some nutrition as part of their program.
Mary McNiff would like to know, in the hybrid model, can we stream live via Zoom for the kids not in school that day? That's something under discussion. And Andrea Sullivan, what is the maximum amount of time our kids will be on the bus each way?
So Andrew, we can't answer that until we know the amount of kids that are definitely taking the bus. And we'll get that information in the next two weeks. We want to minimize that, obviously minimize that as much as we can. That's why we're looking at at doing the bus routes by school and not by location in town.
All right, do you want to just let us? We'll stop for a second.
So.
Maybe we can all.
Let everybody know that.
Maybe we can all recharge our battery.
Yes, so their Medfield TV is just changing their batteries. So it's going to go dark and then just hang in there and then they're going to pop back up.
And then we have to finish before my battery goes dead because I've gone through almost.
Vaben, it works.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Medfield TV.
That was quick.
Next meeting, Amanda, I bring an extension cord.
What is the switching on me? Okay, we talked about Jessica. Josh, will the assignments work on remote virtual days be required? With two working parents, working parents remote remote work will be nearly impossible, especially in the lower grades. How will this affect progression to the next grade?
Yeah, I think that's a consideration that we have and we're concerned about that. And we know that's that's a real life problem in in families in the homes right now. So that, you know, we are, we're going to try to do the best we can on those remote days to make sure that there's some synchronous asynchronous and some really high-level assignments that kids can be working on.
Chris McHugh Potts, what is the metrics? What metrics are in place to evaluate effectiveness of the various models?
I mean, I see that that's directed towards us. We were going to talk about it. We haven't established it.
Yes.
We're just getting the models. But I think we are. Those are some questions.
That's next step.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Andrea Sullivan, Mary McNiff would like to know the hybrid. Oh, we did that, right? Sorry.
I think we're down to Tara, yeah.
Oh, wait, did we answer Andrea's? How will the kids be graded in hybrid model?
So Andrew, we're going to have the same grading system that we had prior to March twelfth in each building. So we're going right back to the way we did it.
Okay, and Tara, for middle schoolers, do they stay in the same group of peers? I apologize as I joined late and it may have been addressed. Thank you for all you have done.
Tara, we're looking at keeping kids in the same cluster at the middle school level, keeping them together.
What is the maximum amount of time for kids?
I think that seems to be a question that just.
Yes.
Yeah, it's popped up again.
Because we did that one.
Are we? Are we through all of them?
Yes.
Oh, my God.
I think so. I think so. All righty, with that, thank you, everybody, for submitting your questions, for sitting through this, for participating. We we truly appreciate that. At this point, school committee members are there. I mean, this was a rich bank of questions that we got through. And I'm wondering if you folks still have any outstanding ones before we take our vote.
No, I would say that our citizens asked most of them. I think, you know, there's still a lot of work to be done in terms of, first of all, just wrapping our heads around the idea that this has to be a fluid plan, that we can make a recommendation for what might happen as of August sixth. But I think that we all know that August eighth, August tenth, or August fifteenth could be a very different day than today. And so as a community, we have to remain flexible, and it's getting harder and harder to ask, but it's also still the reality as much as it was in March. And that this plan is really about planned safety and risk reduction. And that that is our greatest concern, that we balance the risk of the social, emotional, and educational hit versus what could be a terrible tragedy. And I think that all of us have struggled with that. And I I again have to reiterate to Dr. Marsden and to the administrative team and to the people who are sitting behind him who don't necessarily get all the credit or all the screen time, Mary Brule and Christine and Michael Alfrancesca, that I am astounded by the amount of work that you have been able to do over the last four to five months. And especially, I'm not sure any of you have had a day off since March thirteenth.
Correct.
And I personally know that. I hope everyone out here knows that as well, or they do now, and spread it far and wide because I really admire how well you've been able to stick with the idea of kids first for all of that time. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're here. Well said, Jessica.
Anna May, I do have one.
I'm like, woo, and it's like, I got a question.
No, yeah, I just I wanted to review because I had some going in.
Entire story.
How much I know you met with the Board of Health and obviously they they have. What is the integration like with the town? And I am thinking, as I read through the plan, you're working, you're working so hard for the safety. And then, you know, sometimes the choices, whether it's sports or others within the town, can disrupt disrupt that. So at what level do we work with the town?
Well, I think they, you know, they've been really supportive of what the work we're trying to do. They understand what we're trying to do. They're parents of students in our district as well, three out of the four. So I think that we're going to lean on them on some of these issues coming forward, especially looking at the mask and what recommendations we're going to have for masks in terms of mask policy. Staying in constant communication with them, they've they've actually submitted some questions to me that we're going to try to put together some answers for that are really targeted in their area. So, you know, it's been a really good working relationship and they, you know, they know what our goals are. And certainly, they they have a big role and responsibility. I mean, I think COVID changed their responsibilities, you know, tenfold. And and they've been very, very, very supportive of our work and easy to work with. And I can reach out to any member and they get right back to us. So that's it's the integration you want. I mean, I I have to say, I don't hear that same thing in other communities. So I think that's that's an important piece to recognize that our Board of Health is engaged. They want to do what's best for kids and they want to make sure that everyone's safe.
Anna May, I if I can, I'd like to jump in. Am I coming in really loud still or?
No, it's good. Yeah, no, we can hear you. Perfect.
I wanted to be.
Don't know where you're coming from.
I am sitting in my basement in quarantine. Yeah, and I'm living proof here that we can do this hybrid and I can still be participating in in this meeting. But I I've been pretty quiet this whole time, not because I'm sitting in my basement watching you, but because as part of the committee that has been at work, I can honestly tell you that a lot of the questions that have come up and what you guys are discussing are things that have, if not all of the things, are the things that came up in the hours we spent talking about this as a group and in the forms that we filled out and in the brainstorms that all of the groups went through. I mean, it it can't be understated how much work has been put into the formation of this plan. And we each had an individual meeting with Dr. Marsden. And I remember really vividly him starting my meeting saying, in a perfect world with COVID, which is not a perfect world, but in a perfect world, what would your vote be returning to school? And of course, my answer was in person. And I think everybody would say the same. And when he said the six feet kind of metric did not allow for all the kids to be safely allowed in school, then I immediately pivoted to, okay, then hybrid. Because it was my firm belief that something was better than nothing. And I really truly believe that the plan that we all, this group, this school committee, this town is are going to put forward now really addresses all the safety concerns while still putting the needs, the social, emotional, and the mental needs of our our students first and foremost. And do I understand that this is a living document? Yes. And that things may change on a dime? Yes. But do I also understand that we need to start somewhere and then build on this? Yes. And I also understand that the frustration of parents saying, we haven't seen it, we haven't fully understood it. I I hear you and I understand that and I I feel it. And I think that we just need to move forward so that we can now really start to, as as we've been saying, get into the weeds and answer these questions that we can only answer if we really start to move forward in one direction. So I just wanted to get that off my chest before we we took a vote.
Very well stated, Megan, and thank you for serving on that committee. I'm just gonna unmute myself. So folks, I think the time is now has come. And I'd like to know if we have a motion to approve the recommended model, the hybrid model, that Dr. Marsden just recommended.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I second. Do we need to approve the hybrid model or do we need to approve the plan first? And then approve his?
I think we're approving the plan and allowing them to move forward.
Okay.
I think the the plan and the model, and don't forget the start the start date. Which you can you can always. The start date, next meeting, can we do a counter? But.
All right, so we got three things.
Okay. So we just want to make sure we're doing them in the appropriate order.
I'd like to move, scratch through previous motion. I'd like to move to approve the re-entry plan, re-entry plan for the Medfield Public Schools starting the twenty twenty-one school year.
So moved.
So moved. And do we have a second?
A second.
Second, okay. Let's take a roll call vote on that. Jess Riley?
Aye.
Leo Brown?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
I can't. Are you muted?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, you're far away. Sorry. Anna Mayo Shaebrook, aye. All right, and then the second motion regarding the recommended plan, do we have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve a hybrid plan beginning for the school year, the twenty twenty school year, beginning on September sixteenth.
No, you just.
Twenty twenty.
And then the FY twenty-one school year, I think you meant.
I meant the twenty, sure, FY twenty-one school year, September sixteenth, twenty twenty, beginning start date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Leo. We'll take a roll call vote. Jessica Riley?
Aye.
Leo Brown?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anna Mayo Shaebrook, aye. I think we've done all our motions.
Yeah, because you got the date.
Yeah, we got the date in there. She got the.
I tried to be efficient.
All right, and thank you again to all the folks who tuned in. And just gratitude all around to to this monumental task.
And when will the actual document be released to?
Hybrid meeting work.
A lot of great questions from the community, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, Dr. Marsden, that'll be posted on the medfield.net website?
Yes.
Okay.
Posted this evening.
I believe that what our peak was three sixty-four?
No, three seventy-eight.
Three seventy-eight. Oh, you must have looked away.
Yeah.
That is a record. So thank you all for being so concerned about your children. We are too.
All right, so our next school committee meeting is actually next Thursday, August thirteenth. And so do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Jess Riley, second. All right, roll call vote. Jess Riley?
Aye.
Leo Brown?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anna Mayo Shaebrook, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anna Mayo Shaebrook, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anna Mayo Shaebrook, aye. Thank you.